All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the October 29th City of Las Cruces Planning and Zoning Commission. Thank you for your patience this evening as we're a few minutes delayed, but really excited that everyone made it out tonight, really looking forward to the discussion tonight. This is going to be a little bit different than our typical meetings that we have here. This is a work session on the Realized Las Cruces Development Code Update. So we will hear a presentation from the consultants, from staff, followed by a discussion amongst ourselves up here on the dais, and then we'll open it up for public participation as well. So with that, can I get a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Second.
Do we need a roll call? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll turn it over to staff and for opening remarks. Thank you.
Well, good evening, Chairman, members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, Larry Nichols for the record, Community Development. Here we are with our work session that we've been looking forward to now for nearly two and a half years for this study. You know, our current code is 2001 Land Use Code or zoning code, and here we are nearly 23 years later. So I guess that code must have been a good one, it stood the test of time, and we'll hopefully this one will do the same. But we'll have the same meeting as the Chair mentioned, our consultant, Tara Friesen, and Nichols from El Paso. We have Erica Craycroft and Fred Lopez have helped us through this process over the last two years. And then I want to recognize our staff as well, planning and community development staff, Sarah Gonzalez, Adam Ochola, Dave Weir, Chris Faber. I was in several of the meetings as well. And then we've had, in the presentation, you'll see that this is a very well-vetted update to our planning and zoning code. Several public meetings, TAC meetings, technical advisory committee meetings, and meetings with stakeholders. But I'm going to yield the floor to Erica Craycroft for her to make the presentation for your review, and I think you'll find it's very informative. Erica?
Good evening, Chairman and members of the Commission. My name is Erica Craycroft with Friesen-Nichols, and I have a presentation I'd like to share with you all this evening. Again, I'm joining you this evening to talk about the Realized Las Cruces Draft Development Code that we have been working on. Again, my name is Erica Craycroft, and I'm the project manager from Friesen-Nichols, leading this effort from the consultant side. Also joining me this evening is Fred Lopez from LOI, and we have several other team members that you see here that you've also seen at various meetings throughout the process. For this evening's agenda, I'd like to start with a process overview, either for folks who are new to this development code process, or as just a reminder for anyone that's been following along. Next, I'll touch on some overall draft highlights compared to the current code that's in place today, and then focus on some of the major revisions that have happened in the last few months since this was last presented to you. I'll look ahead at some next steps, what happens after this evening, and then I'd be happy to take any comments or questions that you may have for us. Overall, our big question for you this evening that we'd like for you to keep in mind is what are some of the additional revisions that you would like to see in the draft before it moves forward toward adoption? So first, starting with the code update process, back before we started anything with the development code, the city underwent the development of a comprehensive plan called the Elevate Comprehensive Plan. And through that process, that involved a significant amount of community involvement, really to identify the shared vision for the city moving forward. That plan was adopted in 2020, and shortly after that, the city began the development code update process. From the Elevate Las Cruces Plan, there were about 500 different recommendations that came out of this plan, and you can see the different types over on the right side. Some are related to the development code. Some of the other recommendations are accomplished by capital improvement projects, maybe future studies that need to be conducted, and general establishing policy for the city moving forward. So for our effort, we're really focusing on the items specific to the development code. And there are about 200 of those items. So as we began this process, we identified all 200 of those items and organized where in the code those could be addressed, and use that kind of as our starting point to make sure that we're moving forward focused on the community's vision. Some information about the project scope, these are the sections of the current code that we're looking at through this update. A big focus is on the zoning regulations, the zoning map, subdivision regulations, and then also a number of development standards that you see listed out here, drainage signs, landscaping, roadways, et cetera. This update process is a three-phase process, and we started this back in March 2021. So for Phase One is what we called the Diagnostic Evaluation. So we spent that time reviewing your existing plans, like Elevate, the Active Transportation Plan, other plans that had been adopted by the city. We also reviewed the codes that were in place. We met with a number of stakeholders and code users, city staff members, Planning and Zoning Commission members, city council members at that time, and other code users, like builders, engineers, surveyors, economic development professionals, at the beginning to make sure that we heard and identified what are the big issues as we get ready to start this process. Once that was concluded, we actually started with the code update. So this was, you can see, the longest segment of this process, that was drafting the code and drafting the map. During that time, we worked very closely with your city staff, incorporating their comments and also comments that were provided from the Technical Advisory Committee as we drafted each section of the code. Phase Two concluded once we had really a complete draft, and we were able to look at everything holistically rather than one piece at a time. Then lastly, we are currently in Phase Three. The purpose of this phase is now that we have a complete draft, we're trying to make some final touches to it. What do we need to address or revise before we get to final adoption? For looking ahead, we are aiming at final adoption about in February of next year. So we're getting closer. I mentioned that we incorporated the Elevate Las Cruces Comprehensive Plan throughout because there was so much positive and helpful community input during that time, but also through this process, we did have additional community input that we received throughout the process, beginning to end. We had the code user interviews, we met with at least 45 different folks, either at the beginning to get some input as we were starting, or later here toward the end where we got feedback on the draft. City staff hosted at least 30 or 33 technical advisory committees, sometimes called the TAC, of local code users and other professionals who could provide input on the drafts as they were being developed. There were four open house meetings to invite public input. Also, from an online perspective, the code was available at various points throughout this process, and from either a virtual open house or just open commenting, we received almost 300 comments through the online feature. And in addition to that, we were emailed about more than 200 additional comments. So there's been significant community input to date. So first, in the highlights, I'd like to focus on the revisions that are kind of the big picture. How does the draft code compare to what you have in place today? One of the big recommendations from Elevate Las Cruces, the Comprehensive Plan, you can see here is the future development map and the place types. We use that to guide the updated zoning districts. So we do have a new set of zoning districts, and those include some character-based zoning districts. There are three of them, and we call them NH1, 2, and 3. NH stands for neighborhood, and these are really the districts that have some residential component to it, or may include some mixed-use development as well. And within those three districts, the character-based areas, there are three different character area types. So the difference between those, the district prescribes the uses that are allowed, whereas the character area prescribes more about the building form and the site design. In addition to those character-based districts, we do also have more of the traditional zoning districts that are more commercial-based. We have several overlay zoning districts that, again, were informed by the Elevate Las Cruces Comprehensive Plan. You see the Elevate map on the left, identifying the three different types of overlay zoning districts, and we used exactly those same district groupings for the overlay districts. The mixed-use corridor, the town center, and the neighborhood center are all overlay districts pulling forward from Elevate. The purpose of these overlays are to create concentrated areas of increased density, creating vibrant, walkable areas. So again, on the left, you see the Elevate Future Development Map, and on the right is the zoning map. I'll zoom in in just a second. But you start to see some comparisons about how where the map on the left really informed as we were developing the map on the right. Zooming in, that's a little bit easier to see. I know this is still very small to see on the screen, but this is available along with the complete draft on the RealizedLasCruces.com website. So I would encourage anybody to visit that website, and you can click on a specific property and see what district would apply. Again, that's RealizedLasCruces.com. On the Documents page, this is available. Also available on the website, these are the character areas that I mentioned that prescribe more about the building and building form and site requirements. This map from Elevate is the Future Thoroughfare map. It also included recommended cross-sections and roadway design features. We took this information from Elevate and turned it into roadway cross-sections that worked to incorporate multimodal considerations into future street design. We had some pretty significant updates throughout the code related to landscaping, trees, and parks, some additional provisions for street trees, including requirements for parking lot landscaping within the park to help break up kind of a sea of parking, incorporating more screening buffers, requiring tree removal permits to help with tree preservation for trees larger than two inches caliper or diameter. And I'll talk more about this in a minute, but neighborhood park dedication and trail dedication requirements. And just to kind of, in general, some of the other items that we incorporated from the Elevate Comprehensive Plan and also the Active Transportation Plan, really focusing on including some more building form standards about how does the building look from the street or interface from the street, supporting missing middle housing variety. If you're not familiar with that term, missing middle, that's really referring to everything between a detached, single-family home all the way up to a larger apartment building or condo building. So that includes like a duplex, accessory dwelling unit, townhome, small apartment. That's really the purpose of missing middle, to provide some more housing options. We had some recommendations for including neighborhood services within residential areas. You'll hear a little bit more about that in the next set of edits. Expanding the traffic impact analysis requirements to include multimodal considerations, so bike and pedestrian, and also some recommendations to help enhance connectivity throughout the community, both from a vehicular and pedestrian standpoint. Then for the next section, I'll focus on some of the more recent revisions. So I think the last time this draft was presented to you, it was a June 10th work session, so all these changes are items that have happened since that date. We do have a new section that we have proposed called Transitional Provisions, and this is really focusing on what happens after the code is adopted for anything that has already started the development process or comes in shortly after adoption of the code. We've proposed an eight-month transitional period after the effective date. The effective date would be the day the code would be adopted. So for eight months after adoption, an applicant would have the option to either process their application under the old code, which is now our existing code, or they could opt to use the new code, which we hope that they will. So the purpose of that, at the end of those eight months, we can have a list of items, you know, if somebody opted for the old code, why did they do that? Is there something that needs to be improved with the new code? So at the end of the eight months, we would recommend considering a series of minor amendments just to catch anything that could be improved. Anything that would be submitted, any development applications submitted before the effective date or the adoption date would be processed under the current code that you have in place now. And as far as vesting, sometimes called grandfathering, any zoning application that's been submitted before the effective date or before the eight months ends, vests applicants for all the future zoning actions. Similarly, a subdivision application vests them going forward. So for example, if a PUD had an approved concept plan before the effective date or before the eight months ended, they could continue to use that PUD concept plan and come in with a site plan based on that and continue moving forward with that process. One other edit is related to the flexible development standards. In a previous draft, we had some recommendations where we had flexible development standards kind of scattered throughout the document. So it was in the landscaping section, there was specific standards there, and the parking standards, it had specific standards. And what we heard from city staff and some others was that was just too confusing to have it spread out. And so the change here was switching it back really to how it is now. So there's the Tier One and Tier Two that allows administrative approvals for minor deviations from development standards. So this is a change in the sense that it's a change to our working draft, but it's really returning back to your current practice. The Historic Preservation Chapter, Chapter Two, has several edits. One of those is you'll see a lot of text at the beginning that is struck out. Those were duplicate provisions. There's another part of the city's code of ordinances that actually establishes HPC, and so we took out anything in our section that might conflict or duplicate what is elsewhere in your code. So that was removed. And then also, as the responsible city official for administrative decisions, we specified the Community Development Director or their designee. That was a change that we made really universally throughout the code, elevating everything to a director-level position for consistency. Again, a change that we've made since a previous draft, we initially had proposed the neighborhood center overlays, again, from the Elevate Place Type overlays. That was proposed as a use classification. We had since changed that to an overlay district, so that's really just a minor change in how it would be administered. So that's really just a minor change in how it would be administered. It has a very limited list of allowed uses because this would be typically a smaller commercial node in a residential neighborhood. The list of uses that you see here at the bottom, that's an exhaustive list of all the uses that are allowed. And this would require a rezoning to designate this. We recently made some revisions to the dimensional standards to allow some increased flexibility. For all of the districts, we have since removed a minimum lot area. And for the NH or neighborhood districts, we also removed the minimum lot depth. And the purpose of this, again, was really to increase flexibility in these areas. So instead of those dimensional standards, lot size would then be regulated by, they all have a minimum lot width and they all have setbacks. We had several changes to the permitted use chart. We added a new use called a café, which is defined as being smaller than 3,000 square feet. So it is a very small building footprint. Also, a local grocery, that was an existing use, but we did add both of those to be allowed in NH 1 by right. That was something that we heard from the community and then also from city council about making sure that there was increased access to food in residential areas. So we did add that. Local retail was also added back in to NH 1, but it would require an SUP. And again, it must be less than 3,000 square feet with the intent that it's still compatible with residential areas. We did change a drive-through to be prohibited in NH 1. A tap and tasting room to be permitted by right in NH 3. Gas pumps and car wash in NH 3 by right, but only on a collector or higher roadway. And also changed cannabis production to be prohibited in the two lower intensity NH Back on what I mentioned about the missing middle housing, trying to support more housing variety in the duplex, triplex, quadplex-type housing, we removed, we had previously suggested some compatibility provisions that related to where these uses were located and how the building was designed, if they were near single-family homes. And what we heard from the community was, you know, that wasn't really a priority, that we were more interested in supporting more housing options. So we did remove some of those provisions in the latest draft. Similarly, for multifamily dwellings, we had previously split the multifamily uses into two different groupings. One was for the smaller multifamily complexes, that's five to 12 units, and then for 13 or greater. Just to simplify, we made those one multifamily use. So that helps clean everything up a little bit. It's instead regulated by dwelling units per acre. And we did allow those by right in all three of the NH neighborhood districts. And similar to the duplex standards, we did remove the compatibility provisions to try to make this more affordable, attainable for folks to do. For the off-street parking requirements, the first part of this is not necessarily a change, but the minimum parking requirements are established in the permitted use chart. There is no off-street parking that's required in downtown, the urban character area, and then any of those three overlays that I showed earlier. We had previously applied a maximum parking standard where there was a limit to, if you wanted to exceed the minimum, you could only exceed up to a certain amount before you started having to do things like permeable pavement and things like that. We heard that not everyone liked that. So we reevaluated the maximum parking requirements and removed those from all the uses except for maximum parking. Now it only apply to what you would typically think of as big-box uses. So the regional grocery, regional retail, and shopping center, really focused on trying not to have the sea of parking effect. We have also made some adjustments to park dedication. The first part of this, again, is not necessarily an edit. This section does only apply to neighborhood parks and trails. So neighborhood parks are the smaller ones. The larger parks are regulated and handled through the city's Impact V program. So we're only looking at neighborhood parks here. And this section specifies that park dedication and improvements of the parks is required. And the main change that happened here, there's a simplified calculation for how you would determine how much parkland is required for your development. That's outlined here, but that's really the main change here. We also, we had specified previously the required improvements in the code. So that's things like maybe how many picnic tables you would provide or swing sets or things like that. That's since been moved to a separate manual, so that can be maintained and updated over time. And lastly, adding some clarification for the timing of when parks have to be developed. So looking ahead at our next step, so here we are tonight at our work session. Again, we would love to hear any feedback or questions that you may have for us ahead of next month. The city will ask the commission to meet again on November 19th for a public hearing and to consider providing a recommendation for the code, draft code, to move forward to city council, along with any adjustments that you would like to see. After that, we'll conduct a similar work session with city council on December 9th to get any feedback from them. And then council would be asked to consider adoption at public hearings on February 3rd and 17th. So that concludes my presentation and I would be happy to take any questions or comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Any presentation from staff or that's it? Okay. Appreciate that. Thank you for running through and providing a high-level overview. Really excited to see some of the things that have been discussed across, you know, throughout the process finally make it into this version of the draft. So I think we're headed in the right direction. I think there's still some things that we can certainly discuss tonight and possibly get some last-minute tweaks, but appreciate all the work that's gone into it up to this point. I know it's been a long process, lots of bumps perhaps, curves in the road, but I think we're getting close. Turning to my colleagues, opening up for discussion, I don't know if staff wants to facilitate, I guess I can facilitate, but I think maybe the most efficient route here would maybe to go section by section so that we can kind of, you know, we're not jumping around all over the place and we may be methodical about how we go through it this evening. So I don't know if that works for you all, if there's a different approach. I'm seeing nodding heads. So maybe we go with that approach. So the first section would be chapter one, general provisions. I'll just open it up. Any questions, comments on this particular section?
I think my first comment, which is kind of pointless, but I just want to ask clarification. Page 21, G, item E. This is on notice for public hearing regarding the signs that are put on the property. This E is kind of just saying signs must be removed by the property owner, applicant, or representative within one week of the final decision. My question comes in, is there going to be any enforcement to that? That needs to be stipulated in the code because I know that there have been signs out there for a long time and I would prefer to see them taken up after the decision is rectified, if that makes sense.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Marie, what we can do is work with codes and implementing a program essentially that once all of the signs are done, we can reach out to our applicants, let them know to go ahead and remove their signs. If they're not removed within a week, then we would have codes go out there and give them a citation. That'll help us at least get through those processes of getting the signs removed. I know that has been a concern for years and it's generally, once a case is heard and the development doesn't take place, usually the sign stays up. So that's something we can work with our codes department on.
So is that the case? So if they come before planning zoning and there's a decision made or a recommendation made to city council, does the sign stay up until it goes through city council? Because presumably, there's going to be a new sign, right, with the new date and everything?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner, normally what takes place is we will have them either take down the sign because a lot of times we have the winds here, it's going to damage it. In order for them not to have to repay for an additional sign, they will remove the sign, hold on to it, and then we'll provide them replacement stickers and the sign goes up at the time that the city council's decision comes in.
Okay, yeah, that would be great because there's, there can be a delay and we know how the winds can thrash things around here. Any other question? Commissioner Costa?
You know, just reading a little bit about feedback on section F here and looking at the appeals, the part that just is discussing, you know, the fees to be assessed for, you know, an applicant putting in an appeal for, you know, whatever decision, I'm just curious if there's any potential that, you know, the fee could potentially be refunded if the decision was reversed. I do understand that the city would take significant hit in that situation, but if it was reversed, I would also potentially argue that the applicant is taking a significant hit in waiting to go through that appeal process and making it to that point as well.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Costa, the problem with that that we would run into is a lot of times, we already have our fee schedule adopted. We have to take the fee schedule separate to city council. Unless there's a process in which we can waive those, it's very hard to reimburse because normally what that entails is you're going to have your application fee, which is generally non-refundable for any application that comes forward. An appeal works the same way. You're providing an application fee for an appeal. Next, we would have any of the notification fees. And so you're looking at either sign or letters going out to the actual neighbors. Those are non-refundable as those are part of that process. So it's very difficult to provide that as a service or a refundable process, just the way that it's laid out. It's known that, you know, if you provide that application, there is no guarantee as there is an appeal process. Once it's actually appealed, even if they go to city council, there is always an opportunity for them to appeal that decision to district court in which they would also not be reimbursed on those fees either.
Could I just follow up with that? And it's kind of a general question, but do we have a way to, I guess, maybe annually or whatever, review all the appeals that, you know, would have been successful and/or try to incorporate that into this 25-year review? Just curious if that was anything that went into this.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Costa, I think that's a lot of the reason why we are redoing the code. We've seen a lot of variances come through. We've seen a lot of zone changes. A lot of appeals have gone through. And so a lot of the modifications we have made and implemented into the new code will provide some of that relief that we've noticed needed to be changed.
Any other comments or questions on this section?
The way I wrote my notes down is a little more scattered than...
Did I screw you up?
Yes. It messed me up a little bit that we're going chapter by chapter because I just went in and found the areas that needed improvement in the things that I've been doing. So I think as of right now, chapter one is good.
I've got a couple of questions on chap... So the eight months, I guess, grace window, for lack of a better term, for the transition, where did eight months come from? My understanding is it's typically a six-month timeframe. Just curious where the eight months came from. Why that?
Mr. Chair, we generally look at what's going to be comparable. We will still have applications in place and so it's kind of, at six months, sometimes we're still getting people through that process. In order to make it to where an application can actually make it through that one-year term, a lot of times we have to evaluate what currently our processes are. And so we're looking at the amount of review times that we're going through with applicants. We've adjusted to basically see where we can get them through that approval process. So at the end, we get some type of approval before that year deadline comes up. Eight months generally, when we're working with developers or contractors or design professionals, you have your review timeframe, you have the, you know, the time that it comes back to make all the modifications, those reviews again. When we generally look at three reviews or so, we're putting in that timeframe to make sure that they're accommodated and we're not looking to extend any of these projects moving forward. We want this to be just a firm deadline, so we're not trying to do 15 extensions when it gets time.
Understood. Thank you. And then on the approval authorities table, a couple of, I guess, questions, comments. The first one being the final plat approval. Correct me if I'm wrong, but currently we, the Plan and Zoning Commission approves final plats, correct?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner, depends on a final plat. So generally, what you would be looking at, final plat provisions are if they're not non-administrative replats. And so they are still considered a final plat. And so you have alternate summaries that go through just administrative staff for approval. PNZ would make determinations on non-administrative replats. It's still considered a final plat, it's just decided if it's minor or major. That's the difference with the way that the new code is written. They're no longer called replats. And so with a final plat, there would be a PNZ recommendation for those that are being lot splits that are more than two lots or are part of anything that has not been previously subdivided that's increasing the number of lots from the original.
Okay, but are, am I not correct then, in our current process, if we see a preliminary plat that we approve, we also then see the final plat, correct?
Mr. Chair, currently, you do not see the final plat. You are approving the preliminary plats in the current phase and then staff is approving their final plat following the preliminary plat approval. The only time that PNZ would see them. I think what you're deferring to is going to be the final site plan, which is currently the provisions for a planned unit development. So a final site plan would come in as if it was complementary to a preliminary plat. But that's through the PUD process.
Okay. I guess I'm a little confused because we definitely have items that are final plats that we're typically approving at the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I would consider those probably either non-administrative replats where you're going from, say, one lot to two-lot split and you're increasing the number of lots, or they're called out as preliminary plats. As far as final plats, right now, they would be done administratively through staff because they follow the final plating process because something else has already been approved prior. Or they use the alternate summary process, which is still following final plat subdivision requirements, is essentially what they are.
Okay, so basically, the process is not changing.
We are not changing any of the subdividing processes nor the roles of what PNZ would be recommending or approving at this time.
Okay. This is maybe less of a, well, it is a question, but I know there's a few folks in the audience tonight that are here to hear and discuss issues around historic preservation. So I'm wondering if staff or the consultant could explain any changes in that process from what we currently do to what's being proposed here?
Sure, I can start and then I'll hand it over to Chris. So one of those changes was the designated authority, the city staff member that's responsible for that position. I believe now it currently reads Historic Preservation Specialist, although that's not currently a filled position and that name may change over time. But for consistency with the rest of the code, we did change that to the Community Development Director as being the responsible city staff official. And that also includes their designee. So if there is a Historic Preservation Specialist or Historic Preservation Officer, that person could also be the Community Development Director's designee for administering that chapter.
Mr. Chair, and I would also reiterate, the roles that were listed within the original chapter 40 have basically been relayed into the same code. So going through each chapter and each section, none of the rights or the authorities were changed. There are still types where, you know, certificate of appropriateness is still decided by the Historic Preservation Commission at this point or committee. But there is no change as far as what their roles were. as far as what their roles were. It was minor modifications that came over and then changing, of course, the position type just because we're not sure if that position would ever change. We don't want to have to come back to council every time and modify that because that creates a time lapse when somebody submits an application to get that person on board, and we don't know how long that may or may not take.
Okay, but the process and the, I guess, role of the Historic Preservation Committee and what they recommend or not recommend, what they're involved in, that's the same as it is now?
Mr. Chair, that is correct, yes.
Thank you.
I got one for chapter one. I got a question for you. The, mine really has to do with the amendments to the document code, which is in chapter one, just on page 2030 that I have, and it's not necessarily dealing with a transitional period of the first little bit, you know, the eight-month period. In the, let me give you a little story behind what I'm trying to tell you is, I was involved a little bit with the UDC that was done when the county changed their zoning, and what ended up happening is once we, once it was adopted, there was a lot of things that we didn't see in this plan, in the UDC, but because once it was passed, it was passed in the light of it's a living document. But then what ended up happening is even though it was a living document, the staff then turns it not into a living document and it becomes what they're going to tell us what we can and cannot do. And so we had to actually find a commissioner to come in and change some of the little things that were just missed, that were missed. For example, one of the little items that was missed in the UDC was, we had a, all sidewalks went to a six-inch-thick concrete, and so we didn't really need a six-inch-thick everywhere just for a walking path. And so that was one of the little provisions that we changed back down to a four-inch. The issue with that was, we had to find a commissioner to actually come in and help us amend that. So just at the beginning, then I believe after that, that short amount of time that we had, then those provisions were changed by, you know, the development group came out and, you know, other people came out as well and said, hey, we missed item 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. Well, what that ended up happening for us is then we were able to change the 30 items, and then I don't think we have really had many changes since then. So just as a, knowing that this is a living document, as it moves, as it changes and stuff like that, and we actually implementing all of this, is there anything in the first, say, year that allows us to not, to have like a mandatory comeback, double-check things so that when the public does have, you know, we got over-the-year span, kind of like, I'm a home builder, it's kind of like, hey, I built your house, we messed up on five items here. Well, we submit a warranty, right? And then we go back and we fix the five warranty. But in this case, we'd have to find a commissioner or a city councillor to be able to do that. Is there anything in your code just for that transitional period that allows us to have a little bit of that flexibility instead of, I hope I'm coming off clearly?
Yes, I think so. So that is really the purpose of the eight-month transitional period is, if there is something that makes it unusable for a particular development, they can always opt to use the old, also current, code if that works better for them. At the end of the eight months, we would recommend that you revisit all of the items that have been issues over that eight-month period and do an amendment at that point. So beyond the eight months, what a lot of cities opt to do is plan for, once a year, to do updates to the code. You can do others in the meantime if there's something specific that comes up, but that's more general practice for the city, that's not always included in the code itself.
So in the, in the end of the eight months, your recommendation is, at that point, then we can come through with, because we're going to see people, developers or individuals that come in and have these little changes, and it's going to be the first time using this new code, and then all of a sudden we're going to say, oh, we missed line item this and, you know, this little provision in there, so...
Exactly.
But you're saying, so at the end of the eight-month revision, is there anywhere that says we need to mandatorily come back and check this, or is that just naturally going to happen in this process?
That is not currently included in the code. We wouldn't typically include that in here. That would be more of just a policy recommendation for reviewing. One other item I wanted to add for your example about the sidewalk thickness wasn't quite right. One other good change about what we have done is pulling out a lot of the technical standards like sidewalk width into a technical manual document that can be updated separately as needed a lot more easily than a code can be updated. So if there are more technical details like that that need to be adjusted more frequently, that can be done more easily than it is today.
With those technical details, do you know when those are actually going to come out?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner, we hope to have those ready for your packets next month. We did provide some revisions. We've been going through that process of getting those revisions done, and then they will be out for your review, so that way you can provide some of those comments next month before recommendation. What staff would be doing is taking this as a separate resolution to council for adoption, and then staff would be monetarily, basically modifying this administratively as we see those issues or concerns coming up, as that would be more of that living document. The code is written in a sense of, this is the code, this is what's required, and then this is how you're going to do it, is what the technical manuals will provide.
And does this manual show us how to update the technical, the technical codes of this? Is it just written somewhere that says, here's the, this is the procedure of how to update it?
Mr. Chair, normally when a process is coming, when we're going to amend codes, normally it's because we've identified that there's been discrepancies. We notice that, we see the same things happening or the same things being questioned, and so we document those, and then we would come back with amendments every year if we tend to see those. If it's something that we would want to change right away because it is going to affect, you know, development or some type of discrepancy with any of our other cases moving forward, we'd probably put that on the next agenda to council because every time it has to go to council when it's a code modification. Whereas a technical manual will be done administratively through staff. So that's going to be working with the development community to see what issues we're running into and was this right, was this wrong, and then making those modifications at that point in time so that you wouldn't have to wait. It's going to be a smoother process, and so that would be working with Public Works Department, Parks Department, anybody who's going to be part of those technical manuals in order to update, you know, maybe it's park installation of what kind of equipment or any of their policies or plans that they have in place.
Thank you.
Along the lines of the technical manual, how, how would the public provide input into those processes? For example, we have references to, say, traffic calming measures. As it's written right now, that's a technical manual completely administered and maintained by staff. But how would, say, the bicycle advocacy community be engaged in any potential updates or changes to that technical manual to improve accessibility and safety of our transportation network? Is there a way for the public to, because right now we haven't seen any of that, so you're referencing them, I don't know what they say. And I understand, I understand the staff's position of doing it that way, and I completely agree with it. It makes changes a heck of a lot easier, but I'm also concerned that there, it can be used to not make changes. You know, staff doesn't have to update the manuals. So I'm just, I'm curious, how does staff kind of see that playing out down the road?
Mr. Chair, that's one of them. I'm going to have to figure out how we're going to do those processes, how we would make it to where it's public viewing, and then also be able to say, you know, these are what's going to be made as changes as they continue to grow. A lot of them do reference, you know, adopted plans or policies already when you follow NACTO and ASHTO and all, those are actually identified within there, and they're updated based on the timeframes that those get updated. We also have state requirements where we follow ADA standards, and so those get updated. Let me look into what processes we can do and maybe how we can actually formulate that public input. We will have these available, though, online, so at least getting us through the point of realize, and then coming up with a process in which we can modify those after, I think, is what we'd probably discuss.
That's great, and that's totally fair. I just think it would be helpful to kind of understand how those changes would get made. But I completely agree with the approach, especially for some of these really technical things where things do change quite frequently, and being able to stay nimble, I think, is a good thing.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, if I could make a comment. Chris Faver, Community Development. One of the things that staff has discussed is more of a robust educational effort, once realized has been adopted, to engage the community more on some of these issues. I know specifically we've had conversations around carports and things like that that maybe the community wasn't as up to speed on. So part of what we're looking at is creating more of an ongoing engagement to make sure that the community is aware of the new adoption and some of these new changes, and we can certainly incorporate some of these other things into that process and make it more of an ongoing attempt to stay engaged, whether it's through more work sessions here at PNZ or through city council or other things. But that is something that's on our radar, especially given how long it's been since this code has been adopted. We don't, we don't want to go down that road again.
Thank you. Any other comments on first section, chapter one?
And just, just along with that comment that we're talking about right now is, it is more of just a clarification of how to do it, right? It's not, it's kind of like a discussion that we had before, not in this meeting, but it was more of like, in the book, if I needed to have some technical data, technical things changed, what's the process? And I think that's kind of more of mine, it's just, I just want to know the process of how to do it as someone coming in, if I'm a bicyclist, and I, I want to just know, how do I, how do I put my input in there? Is there a way in the code that it says, okay, this is, if you want to change these, I do it by this process? And that way it's just kind of, it's just a little bit clear for some of those processes. Because I know on the development side, there may be certain things that we're saying, hey, this is, you know, new engineering came out, there's a new, there's always new products, other things like that, that we can update those technical sheets, whether, you know, there are just things like that, that, okay, now that the new technology is here, what do I do to update this code so that we can remove this one? And it's just more of clerical, like, written process is all I'm trying to say on that. The, the other one that I have, and I'm not sure if it's in chapter one or if I should bring it up here, mine is, I don't know where this fits, and what I ended up writing here on my notes is like, the current code, what is the flaws of our current code with the city and processes and things like that? And one of them that I have is the building out of new roads and of fixing old roads, where we have a development that has been there for 20 years or 40 years, and a new guy comes in next to it, and then the new guy has to build all of the new roads. And then you can drive throughout this city and you'll see it go from, Mesa Grande Drive's a great one, four lanes to two lanes to four lanes, back to two lanes, and I was just trying to figure out where, where would I bring that, seeing that, I think that's one of the issues we have with our current code, and that I would like to see that somewhere updated or point me in the right direction to understand, how is that problem being addressed in the new code so, so that we can kind of, the things that I have here is the cost sharing, it always ends up going to the, either the first guy, you know, the first guy in is the one that has to spend all of the money to put it in. And so really it creates a lack of development. It's always the last guy's the winner, so I'm going to, I'm going to wait till the end as long as I can because then someone's going to put all the improvements in, and then I'm going to come in. And so some of our pieces of land throughout the city, you'll notice that don't get developed, which are, could be prime pieces, but it's because the improvements of certain items are so expensive on the roads. So they'll wait and wait and wait. So I don't know if that's the right, if this is the right section to ask that question, I can wait, but I just, it says general provisions, and it seemed more, maybe that's the area to ask.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Thurston, where that's going to be located is, you're going to have the provisions of when you do a subdivision, that is when road improvements are required. At that point, then it's going to take you to the technical manual, which is going to tell you what's required at the time that you actually do these improvements and what you actually install. So once again, you're talking about, at subdivision, you're required to do the improvement, and then this is how you're going to be doing the improvements. I think at that point, if there's going to be a cost sharing or something of those natures, providing those comments so that we staff can look at them to see if there are alternative options that we may be able to either implement within the technical manual or through code, that would, I mean, we'd rather hear them so that way we can start evaluating them. They may not be known. Right now, we know currently if you build a local roadway on a subdivision, you're required to do all of the improvements, and yes, that does provide it for anybody who's adjacent. A lot of the roads that we did take in may not be improved, especially out on the East Mesa, whenever we did our annexation, annexation in, waivers have been given to certain developers, some of them have not been, and so we have to calculate that as well.
One, like, another example is on Delray. There's, there's a building that was built there, and so the development has happened on that piece of land, and you go from four lanes down to two lanes, but you have this existing building. And so who's required to do that anymore? It's always, typically it's the developer at the time. And so I'm just trying to figure out, do we have anything in this new code that is going to help that error, in my opinion, of, of the city code? Do we have anything to address, you know, existing road issues, who's paying for it? Because I know in the old code, it was basically, it's not in there at all. It's, you just, whoever the developer is, you put it in. And so I was just wondering, is there a provision we can put in there for the city that says, hey, if, what's a way around this, the issue that we see throughout the city? I don't see it addressed in here, but if you guys can point me and help me, what has other cities done that you've seen or other codes?
Sure. This is partially addressed in section 5-2.
Sorry, do you mind just getting a little closer to the mic? It's kind of hard to hear.
Sorry.
Thanks.
In section 5-2, Roads, Rights of Way and Parking, in item C, Street Design Criteria, on my version it's page 307, but yours might be different. Item 5-2C.
5-2C. So I will hold off my comments then on this until we get to five, if that's where we'll have that discussion then.
Sure, thank you.
All right, final call on chapter one. All right, moving on to chapter two, this is Historic Preservation. Any comments, questions? Give folks a minute to look at their notes. I had one point of clarification. Let me see if I can locate this section, but basically I think there was, and of course I'm not going to be able to find it. There was some language about, I believe it was when there's a potentially eligible structure for Historic Preservation, and there was something about that the, really in order for any protections to be applied, that the property owner had to be in agreement. Is that, is that an accurate statement of what it says?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner, that is correct. If a property owner does not wish to be a part of a historic district and have their property on the historic registry, it is their right to say no.
Okay, but I'm not necessarily talking about a historic district, but the golf course, the old country club, I think, is a good example. There was that, the Tros Clubhouse. In that case, the developer opted, you know, they didn't want to do anything with it, they made some overtures, but ultimately they decided they were going to demolish the building. In that situation, there was no, absolutely no recourse for the city to, to save that structure outside of removing it from the parcel because the applicant, or the owner in this case, presumably wouldn't have agreed to any protections. presumably wouldn't have agreed to any protections.
Mr. Chair, I think what it comes down to, and if I'm, you know, if I'm understanding correctly, a lot of times, it is if you have a historic property, if it is already listed on the registry, then yes, it would follow the guidelines that are provided by the historic preservation, you know, by SHPO from the state. If you're asking for a new property to come in, though, they have the ability to say that they don't want to be on the historic registry. They can say no to that. And so it's, you're in a district, you're already defined in a district, say, you're part of that district, but you don't have to be a part of the actual registry. And that changes whenever you demo buildings. When you demolish a building, even if you're on the historic registry, there is a process outlined as to what you would actually do on, as far as a demolition of a building. And so depending on if a structure is contributing, if it's, you know, non-contributing, that plays a factor in when a building is actually demolished or not, or when recommendations are made for it to be demolished.
Okay, that makes sense. So, but I, my understanding is that the, the way that this section is currently written, that you do not need to be part of a historic district to have your structure building be recognized and protected by the city under the historic preservation.
Mr. Chair, that is correct, yes. That could be any property, so anything that is older than 50 years. If they're reached out to and asked, you know, do you want to be part of the historic registry? Yes, it gives them the option of yes or no.
Okay, fair enough for your average homeowner. But let's say a developer comes in, they buy up a property in town that has the most amazing building Las Cruces has ever seen by an architect that's world-renowned. There would be no recourse for the city to protect that structure if it's not in a historic district already, because the property owner would decline those, that designation. That's what, that's how it's written now?
Mr. Chair, that would be correct, because it is not outlined anywhere in which they have to follow those provisions or those protections. And so they would go through the demolition process.
Mr. Chair, Chris Faver, I think this is probably a question that might be best followed up at the next meeting. There are specific laws regarding property rights that the city attorney could probably speak to specific to that, without getting into too many, too much of the weeds here. The city has very limited purview in what they can require someone to do on their private property, and this sort of falls into that category that we can probably get more clarification from the city attorney for. But yes, you're correct, the city does have very limited capacity when it comes to forcing someone to do something on their property with a building that meets, you know, a historic timeframe.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I understand. I just think, and I'm no historic preservation expert, so I don't know what the answer would be if there is an answer, but it just seems like there's got to be a way, or I would like to see if there's a way that we can have a mechanism to protect. I mean, we don't have a lot of historic structures left in towns, that's my understanding. And a lot of our buildings now have been built, you know, 1980 or, you know, newer. And so they're certainly not going to be in that classification. And it's, you know, there's some cases where it doesn't make sense, but I think there's also a lot of opportunity to kind of protect some of those cultural resources, particularly in architecture. And I'll self-admit, I'm a little bit of an architecture nerd, so I'm biased there. But it just seems like the average property owner, completely agree with the notion, but it seems like when you're talking about a developer who might come in and, I don't know, buy the Amador Hotel and decide, we're gonna take it down. It just seems like there's got to be, that's probably a terrible example. But my point being is that there's got, it seems like there's got to be a way for the city to try to protect some of these structures when those situations come about. But thanks for the explanation on what they're, how it's written currently. That's all I have on this section, so I'll open it up.
I have a question for city staff. Can you explain a little bit better, clarify on page 80, number five, demolition by neglect and deferred maintenance? I'm just confused as if it's already in that state, what is the point of saying the duty to maintain, duty to repair, and the process to kind of get it back up to non-neglect or deferred maintenance, if that makes sense?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Murray, I think that was added into these sections because a lot of times, it was to have those buildings evaluated before they were demolished. A lot of times, if property owners aren't taking care of property, they do become neglect, and then they do become, essentially come into our nuisance abatement program, or they get identified. But I think that's at least giving them the purview to say, you know, if there is that ability to maybe reuse some of those pieces to re, you know, reuse on other properties, but just not to let the property go into, you know, neglect it and then just demo it, because then it's a lot easier to go through that process, was one of the concerns that the commission did have. And so it was to, you know, provide a way to where buildings weren't just being neglected in order to demo them, and then you're missing that step.
Okay, so I guess on that point, with this paragraph or section, is like, city code's gonna be going out to the properties that are already in that kind of state to then cite them to say that you're starting to neglect and having deferred maintenance on that historic-type property so that it doesn't get into this demolition portion? That's kind of what I'm kind of reading into or towards.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Murray, I think with, codes is already working through the NAP program to identify a lot of these properties, because that was just initiated, you know, a couple of years ago, to where it's now starting to see that these properties are getting acknowledged. And so they're enforcing those. And I think also with getting more of them onto the registry and getting notified and knowing that they're part of these districts, they're a part of these historic buildings, getting people educated to understand that, you know, these are buildings that have been here longer, and that neglect is not the way to actually get them to be demolished. So I think it's going to come down to both things having to take place. But then that program will definitely, the nuisance abatement team will help us get to a point where it's better.
Okay, I think that clarifies a specific question.
Any other questions on chapter two? All right, moving on to chapter three, this is zoning regulations. Give folks a minute, but feel free to just jump in if you've got something on your mind.
First one, general question, probably doesn't apply to number three, but to clarify, there's going to be some sort of education to the public on things that are being updated or changed in the code that we feel are important, such as like carports and whatnot.
Chairman, Commissioner Murray, yeah, that is the intent, to work on a process to help better educate both design professionals, developers, and the community at large on some of these new updates. Staff is currently working on a, on a, on a program to work with staff to get more familiar with more of the, you know, the nuts and bolts of the changes. And then we'll work on a process that explains it a little bit more to the public. But yeah, that is, that is the intent, to make sure that there's more engagement back and forth and keep this from something that people forget about after, after it gets approved.
Okay, perfect. And then my next question. So I pretty much understand, like, the traditional zoning districts. I guess the character-based zoning districts, NH1 through three, is this like a standard that's followed in other example cities that we're trying to mimic for a specific reason? Or to help us benefit in further development of the city?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Murray, what we did was, we used Elevate as that guiding tool to say, you know, we're going to create an urban area, suburban area, and then rural, based on the Elevate map that was created, the future development map. And that provided us the growth to show what density should be reflected as you go through your neighborhoods. And so you would expect to see in an urbanized neighborhood, a lot more density, as to where in a rural neighborhood, you're still continuing to have the one to two or three, eight, you know, three units per acre, but you're not increasing to a larger number. Once Elevate was adopted, we used that as the guide to say, these are how the characters should actually grow out. And so that way, we'd see that growth being at the rate it should go, instead of just saying, you know, all one property should have the same density, because we know that they should be different throughout the city. And so they were just given character zones to say how we want the growth to actually be populated.
All right, Commissioner, and I've chatted with Sarah multiple times on the subject that I'm going to reiterate, because it, it's not on here yet, but she's told me that it'll get in there in the next one, but I wanted to bring it up. So on my book, it's in page 88, where it goes to character-based zoning districts. And it says, on page 88, where it says the example. For example, neighborhood one or NH1, and that's the zoning district. And then it goes to character area is the rural. The clarification that, I want to make sure that gets into this book, is how do I change the character if it is not a zoning change? And so the understanding that I have right now is that the zoning of a, a piece of property is going to actually be, the zoning of it will be NH1 rural, is the full zoning of that. So in order to change that, just the character of it, because if I like, if I, if I like the NH1 zoning, but I would like to change just the rural character to urban, or rural to a neighborhood, this booklet doesn't show how to do that. It only goes, and it kind of addresses only the NH1 side of things. And so just more of a clarification on here is, I believe we need to have something that shows it, how do I change? Now, this is not an argument of any kind, it's just simply a character change. I believe it should be in the booklet somewhere, and if you can help, help me understand how to do that.
Sure. The, the character areas tie back to Elevate, to the, the different place types on the, the future development map. But we could add a description in here about whether an amendment to the Elevate Comprehensive Plan would be required to change the, the character area.
Thank you, because in that, it did seem like it's a lengthy, it's a lengthy process. Because where the character came from is from the Elevate Las Cruces plan. And so in the discussion, it, it went like this. In order to change the character zoning, we will then need to come back, and in order to just change the character, I have to change the Elevate Las Cruces plan before I'm able to then change the character on my zoning. So that process just needs to be written out, so that as someone coming up, you know, as saying, because if this document is going to live for 10 years, 20 years, you know, just the same one like this, someone somewhere is going to say, I just want to change this little corner, because now growth, growth has now come to me, and now this is a prime spot for a urban center. Or it's a prime spot, and as of right now, we do the best we can to plan out for the future. And then we realize sometimes it doesn't go according to plan, and so we're going to see someone come in here and just want to change that character. So I'm just wanting, just a clarification of, you know, if it is, we go to the Elevate Las Cruces plan, that must be, be changed, and then we can change the, the character of it, and what does that process look like? So I know we kind of went back and forth with Sarah a little bit on that. I just want to see that in, in the book.
Along those lines, and it's a good point, but is there potentially already an avenue with the overlay zones that you could leverage? Because an overlay, if you could add an overlay zone, right, it's just a zone change, correct?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner, the way that the overlay zones were outlined, the only ones that would be essentially not specific to an area would be your neighborhood centers. So if you wanted to increase an area that was at maybe intersections or so, neighborhood centers are not mapped out. Your town centers were generally located around larger intersections where we expected to see more growth take place. So neighborhood centers would be your only avenue. Mixed-use corridors were already identified through Elevate Las Cruces, and so we've used those. We necessarily, unless we've grown and we can identify new ones, say if there is growth that's going to take place further off of Highway 70 or in newer areas, and we need to reevaluate that, I think that would come at a different point. But that would also be, you know, if we're doing reevaluation of Elevate Las Cruces as we continue to grow and as we see these modifications take place, that also may be a part of staff's, you know, let's look at, see how we're growing, because we also don't want it to just become sprawl. And that's one of the things we're taking into consideration. And so we would be amending essentially either Elevate Las Cruces or some type of zoning map to reflect those changes whenever we do them, whether it be staff implemented or developer-driven.
Okay, and, and I guess another point of clarification, this would only be, this would only be required or necessary for residential projects, because you could always rezone to commercial, traditional zone, correct?
Mr. Chair, correct. There is zoning map amendments that are permitted within code, and you would just have to provide those. If you're in a rural area and you're looking to put in commercial, you know, designations, we would be looking at the compatibility of where those properties are located to see how they're going to fit within those character areas.
So would that, so it sounds like in your thinking, you're thinking I've, I'm on the crux of the suburban-urban or suburban-rural, and I want to go to the next level of density up, right? And so that's the, that's the mechanism that you're looking for?
Yeah, I'm just, that's about, that's about right. Because what, what happens is, in the time of five years, 10 years, someone is going to come, someone is going to come up here and say, hey, how do I change my character? I mean, I'm not saying it's a good thing, a bad thing, but, and whether we come in and, it still has to get approved through everyone. I'm just wanting to know, what does that process look like? Because we will have someone, you know, trying to change it. We have people trying to change it, you know, commercial to industrial, you got industrial to neighborhood, you got, I mean, throughout the year, as the city changes, I just, solely more of a procedural question and how that happens, not really as a, you know, I think that's all it really is, just procedural, how do I do it?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Thurston, if I could just add one more point. There, there is a, a process to evaluate and amend Elevate as well. And so though, we will make sure that we include what that process is in here, so there is clarification on how that will, will work with, with the rest of the zoning. So we'll, we'll make sure that that's clear for, for moving forward on those issues.
Thank you.
Two questions here. First one, about the drive-throughs prohibited in the NH1. Just curious, I don't know, in terms of the rezoning, if, I'm assuming there's already some drive-throughs in the NH1? Now, do they get grandfathered, or how exactly that would work? And then if somebody is looking to thus afterwards try to do it, I guess they're going to have to get a variance, is that correct? If they wanted to do a drive-through in NH1?
That's correct, that any, any existing driveway, or excuse me, drive-through in NH1 that's there today, that could continue to operate. As far as, once the code will be adopted, if in NH1, they wanted to do a drive-through window, that would not be prohibited, not be permitted. They also would not be able to do a variance to, since it's considered a use type, you can't do a variance to allow a different use. So that would be done either, maybe a PD could be used if, if that was warranted. But also, the intent really of not allowing drive-throughs in NH1 is that it's really primarily residential. It's really limited commercial areas, small, very small restaurants, small grocery store markets. It's more kind of a walk-up neighborhood serving, not necessarily auto-oriented development.
Now, my only, I guess, curiosity there is with the future in the next 20 years, where we're thinking, you know, we are more digital, we are less in-store in a lot of cases. Ideally, you know, we'd like to see the reversal of that to some degree, but just kind of where things are trending, if that supports that to any degree and/or if we care. And then I will just kind of move on to my next question, which is the cannabis production that's prohibited in NH1 and NH2, which was a SUP before. I guess my thoughts on this, I think that feels like we're, I can't understand why we're singling out cannabis production. we're singling out cannabis production versus, I think the real problem that, you know, the city has been seeing is the dispensaries where we have, you know, over 75 dispensaries right now. And I don't know why a production site, for instance, would be that case.
Good question. That was highlighted really just as a change. If you look in the use chart now, it's the same for cannabis dispensary production and integrated cannabis business. None of those are permitted in NH1 or NH2. That was just the most recent change that we were highlighting today.
So basically, just to clarify, you said cannabis production officially got added on to the list with everything else that was already there? Is that what you basically said?
All three of the cannabis-related uses are prohibited in NH1 and NH2, as the current draft reads. The reason that was highlighted in the presentation was we had previously suggested cannabis production be permitted by SUP in NH1 and NH2. So in the latest drafts, we removed that. So now all the cannabis uses are consistent across the NH districts.
Thank you. And then, so for instance, the licensees that are operating in those districts currently, they will get to remain as long as they are the operators or as long as that site is approved? How does that work?
As long as any existing business continues to operate as they are today, they can continue indefinitely, as long as it is a legal use.
So I guess, Mike, sorry, I guess I'm kind of thinking, you know, for instance, say you're a cannabis business, closing down, selling your assets because industry is too saturated right now. You've got an interesting, you know, your only asset, for instance, perhaps licensing gets capped later in the future. You know, is your license worth something? If you are on this NH1 or NH2, if you sell it to some new owner, how entirely would that pass over, you know, on X property in those districts? Is that, you know, new person who may be looking to acquire said license and/or property, is it going to stay same, zoned same for them? And they will be allowed to thus take it over, thus giving that cannabis operator value on their asset of their license? Or, you know, diminishing it when they're trying to sell it because it wouldn't be able to be rezoned?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Acosta, what we've noticed is, right now, the way the current regulations are is you're allowed to do these land uses cannabis-related in our commercial zones. They're not permitted in our R1As, they're not permitted in our R1Bs. That is essentially what NH1 has become. And so those are rezoned. So you wouldn't actually have a lot of those land uses labeled out currently right now from our existing code to what we're proposing. What I will say is that if there is an existing one, there is, we have modified the code to give it an allowance of a two-year nonconformity. So if a business does close down, that land use can still be put onto the property within two years. It used to be one year, so it gives the allotment of a lot more time to actually redevelop that property if you wanted to with the same land use. So there will still be those properties that if they were rezoned to an NH1 or an NH2, they'll be allowed by right, and they can continue by right. If they close down their business, and they would have two years to redo essentially that use with some type of business license, and then maintain that right. We still have some of the, like, some of the properties that were rezoned in 2001 live under a nonconformity now because of those changes. So as long as it doesn't actually basically go away, as long as it's staying in business. But what we did, and what we've evaluated through our actual zoning map was identify a lot of the businesses and try to make sure that we weren't putting them into a nonconformity by the way the code is written. So that was some of our evaluation. We noticed, you know, we looked at specific land uses that were already there and made sure that they were going to fit somehow in our code so that we wouldn't have to have so many nonconformities out there right now.
Okay, thank you. The answer is actually, I think, everything.
I have a small clarifying question on page 92. Basically, we're reducing the 25 garage setback for 20 feet for rural and suburban, and then 12 foot for urban. Is that more or less correct interpretation?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Connor, that is correct, yes. Those have been reduced to where we're looking at a 20-foot when it is a garage. The difference, because we do have carports and garage listed difference, is on a carport, they're not allowed to be enclosed. And so that's the reason why we still maintain that 20-foot setback whenever it is a garage, because those are usually fully enclosed spaces.
I'll just tag on a comment. Generally speaking, on these setbacks, particularly in the urban character type, my preference would actually be that we just have build-two lines. I think that would be more appropriate in the urban context, in my opinion. And it would probably simplify things. So that would just be something I would suggest kind of across the board in the development standards for NH1, that in the urban context, we just go with the build-two lines as opposed to having both setbacks and build-two lines. And then I would probably suggest making the build-two lines a little bit smaller.
Next question or comment that I have is on page 135, which goes towards signage. Number, or letter D per se, basically says that the city is exempt from vehicular directional signage within public right-of-way and city property. I personally would say that they should still have to go through the process that the public has to. I know the city probably doesn't want to do that because it would save them costs. And the only case that I can remember or call to order was the convention center when we changed the signage on that property. But that is my comment there.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Connor, are you referring to on number D, 135?
Yeah.
So this would just be for vehicle direction, so this is telling someone to go right or left. And so this is generally whenever the city has to put up traffic signs. We do have to follow our regulations as far as MUTCD standards and stuff as to where signs are placed for visibility anyway, whenever we're actually doing streets. The only reason why it's exempt from signage, because usually signage will stay 15 feet from property lines. We're not usually working within property lines. And so this doesn't outline if we are basically doing traffic signs and signage. We need to follow essentially what the city has adopted as far as our plans and policies as well.
Okay, that makes sense.
I have just, I think, a general comment on, this is my version, page 86. It's the zoning process overview. And this is, I think, in a couple of different places. But generally, the comment is that initial question, you know, you start with your pre-application meeting, and the initial question is, does the property have the correct zoning district designation? To me, that seems a little backwards of the purpose of zoning. It should be, does the developer, the idea, fit within the zoning? So basically, that second question, does the proposed development meet the district's standards? That's really the first question you're asking. It's not, well, we have zoning, but come, come give us your sales pitch, and we'll go a different direction. You do have the mechanism to get the zone change if you so choose. But I think just semantically, it's a little weird to kind of, it just seems wishy-washy, I guess. So that would be one suggestion there. Another, I think it's this section, I could be jumping ahead, but I'm going to ask anyway since it pops up. So there's a few tables, or figures rather, for each of the zoning districts, beginning page 89 for the next couple pages. And there's the site design, and then it references parking treatments. I kind of feel like we are maybe burying the lead a little bit here when it comes to the elimination of the minimum parking requirements within the urban and the mixed-use overlay zones. And I'm just wondering if we can kind of make it more explicit that you don't have a parking requirement in these areas. Everywhere else you do, but we kind of just ignore that fact. And my concern is that someone's just going to open this up and start designing parking lots in their buildings when in fact, you know, they don't need to be. We don't want them to be necessarily. And I don't want them to get so far down the process before they realize that fact that it's kind of too late to change course. So I think just making it a little bit more explicit across the board. And then, I think this may have been an update that was presented tonight, but on the neighborhood center, there's a few uses that I think we should consider adding. And forgive me, I don't recall if any of these have made it into the latest version. But the ones that were, I feel like, missing from what I'm looking at would be community facilities, specifically like a library, museum. I think community building is also a specific use. I would suggest that that be included. And then personal services, I think, should be included. And my understanding by the definition, that's mainly your hair salons, you know, things of that nature. If I can go to a bar, I feel like I should also be able to get my haircut there. Or not at the bar, but next door. And then art studio slash instruction, that use in particular, I think, is something that should also be incorporated in the neighborhood center overlay. And if other folks have comments, please jump in.
Okay. My next comment is going on to page 166, when we kind of go into the tables about hours of operations for several things. I'm not from here. My biggest complaints are is that everything closes early. I know we want to dictate close time to kind of limit crime and sort of things. But I feel like 10:00 PM, especially if you're younger or in college or something, is very early. And on that, if you want to answer.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Marie, this is part of the university district. So we do have three of our zones that are, I believe it's three, if I go through them. University District, your South Miskieth District, and Alameda Overlay are not being revisited through Realize. These are being maintained until we can actually work with the neighborhoods. These were all established through neighborhoods and through groups. And so this is currently what is in code. And then after Realize is adopted, then we're going to work with each one of those communities in order to basically bring them up to date with Realize information. And so these will not be modified. We did not include times throughout the rest of the code. These were just implemented when the university district overlay was created.
Okay. I think that makes clarification sense. But your point is taken.
So going to the permitted use charts, began on page 214 in my version. Just a few comments, I guess not necessarily looking for a response, but just stating my preferences. Just again, reemphasizing the minimum parking, vehicle parking requirements. I think we should be explicit here that those don't apply in the urban and the overlay districts. Number, I guess, yeah, these are all in order. Number four, which is a manufactured home park, I guess this actually is a question. Is that supposed to be mobile home park? I guess I'm not sure why we would restrict a manufactured home park differently than, my understanding is manufactured home is considered a regular Class A or whatever building. So I'm not sure if that was a mistake or... So that would just be something to maybe double-check, because there is a mobile home, but there's no mobile home park.
We can take a closer look at that. One thing I did want to note about the manufactured home park is that it has additional use-based standards with it for how the manufactured home park would be designed, the internal circulation, size of the spaces, and things like that. So we do have some special standards for those. That's why it's called out as a separate use. But we can take a look at why it's permitted differently than the others.
Okay. And I guess I, I'm also confused why there would be different development standards. Because my, my understanding, based on what a manufactured home is classified as according to HUD, you could have a subdivision, all single-family lots, and you could put a manufactured home on every single one of those, correct?
Yes.
Would that then be called a manufactured home park?
Part of the difference is whether they're all located on one communal lot with rental spaces versus if they're subdivided, individually-owned manufactured homes that could be grouped together or could be within a neighborhood.
Got it, okay. That's helpful clarification. Then I guess the question would be is, are we missing mobile home park? Because we have mobile home, but we don't have mobile home park. So I don't know if that's something that needs to be addressed. Just some other general comments. The sober living home, I guess I'm not, or my preference would be that we mimic the community residence uses there. So changing the two special use permits from NH1, or NH3 and NH2 to by right to match the community residents. It was brought up, but I think it's a mistake to have drive-throughs and gas stations be by right. I don't believe we need more of those in this city. I think it runs counter to many of the other goals and objectives that we have throughout Elevate Las Cruces. We'd like to see those be special use permits across the board. That being said, we regulate childcare centers more strictly than apparently we do gas stations and car washes. I think we should have childcare centers be by right across the board. That goes for the, I guess, in my version, it's 36 through 38. So all the childcare uses should just be by right.
Can you tell me what page you're on?
Yes, I'm on page 216, sorry, of my version, so hopefully it's the same. So this is on page 218 now, professional office. I think that should be by right in the NH2, rather than a special use permit. Campgrounds, I don't know why we're excluding them from open space preserves. Seems like that's where I'd want to camp. Golf courses in open space preserves, I think that should be a special use permit. And I think that's, those are just my general comments there on the specific uses.
Can you go on your slideshow here to page 31?
The, because I, one of the notes that I had on here before, that was the SUPs for multifamily? Has that been, I believe you had changed that, is that right?
Correct. Yes, they were previously, the larger, or excuse me, the smaller ones were SUP in NH1. The larger ones were... The larger ones were SUP and NH1 and 2, uh, and then by right in the other NH districts. They have been consolidated into one category and now they're allowed by right in all three of the NH districts.
Can, can you show me where I find that in this book?
It's going to be located on page 214 and it's going to be number seven.
Because what I'm looking for is just the, the, maybe it's not on these pages, but the, it was to be on, had to be on a collector versus a local. And I wanted to make sure that that was able to be on a different spot as well.
Yes, that, um, that matches up with the last bullet point on this slide, that we removed, uh, most of those provisions, including the one that it had to be located on a, on a collector or larger. Yes, that was removed.
Thanks, I can cross this one off.
And that's going to be located on page 225. That's where you can see all of those being removed. When staff evaluated it, it was, a lot of times you're going to already see that people will construct walls in between properties. Um, some of the conditions were, was it going to impede on collectors? We worked with traffic and that was not going to be a concern because a lot of our local roadways can handle, um, the capacity to have those apartments or those higher densities. And so we removed a lot of those conditions.
Thank you.
Uh, Sarah, this one's for you, page 243, 116. Um, the vehicle is there twice, spelling mistake number one that I've got. Um, question, um, carports number three on 250. 250? Can we add in there or clarify, and maybe I'm missing it, um, that a building permit is required to install a carport so that we don't run into any issues with the, um, variances or special use permits that we've seen across our board?
Mr. Chair, it is listed, um, that, you know, there are no assess, any accessory structures over 120 square feet. Um, being this is in addition to a residence, um, building permits are required. It would be no different than adding a porch or something of that nature. We can put a note on here saying that, you know, building permits are required for carports that are to be attached in the front of the property, if that would at least assist. I think a lot of times we see that the carports are put up because they really didn't know that they needed a permit in general.
I think if we just put it there another time to reiterate that it's required, we'll run into, um, less problems in the future.
I also got a question on the carports. As I drove around El Paso and then also in Los Cruces, there's, they're like these shade structures is what I'm seeing more than a, more than a carport. And, and it's simply two metal poles that are next to the house. And then it's basically can levered out. And then it has just this little, basically a tarp over the top, but shouldn't say tarp, it looks a lot better than a tarp. And anyways, it, it seems more of just like a shade structure. Would, would that, because it's, you're not building it to the standard of a carport, right? Like you're not having extra poles, you're not having other things like that. How would, how would that come into play? What would we classify that as if it's more of a shade structure? Because most of these people are coming in saying, hey, I just don't want my car to be hot. You know, I don't, I, I got a tree next to me, I don't want all of that to drop on it. And if there's, if it's going to hail, I just don't want the hail damage. So that's kind of seems what it is. And so some of them are more shade structures versus carports, but it's probably classified under as still a carport type of a deal. What do we do about those?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Thurston, what we are trying to do is move to where, now that you're going to be able to have essentially what would be considered shade for your driveway, basically using either carport standards, we want them to actually mimic more of the home. We want it to look like the home so that way it matches, it doesn't look out of place. So it'd be like if you had a true addition to your home. Right now, what we're getting is, you know, a lot of them are either being put up without building permits, um, they don't know regulations, there's no design factor to it. And so we're moving towards the code of saying, now we're going to allow these by rights, but we want them to look where they're compatible to your neighborhood, built in compatible materials and still provide those shade structures. A lot of times we see, you know, they may be purchased from Home Depot or so. And so we've had some that have blown off of properties, they're not secured. Those have created really big issues when they're impacting other residences down the street. And so by now allowing it by right, we want to put the provisions of it's compatible with your home.
So if someone does come in again with a different structure that is not in here where it says carports 3A, um, design must be consistent with the main building. If it, if it's not consistent with the main building, yet they haven't permitted it yet, they didn't build it, they would still have to just come in for a variance for that? And so, because they're wanting to build a carport, but if they don't want it to look like the house because the cost of doing so would maybe triple it, right? If they don't want to put the asphalt shingles on the top of it, they won't, don't want to do other things like that that mimic the house, it might be cheaper for them to literally put the metal poles, right? Just put metal and then what's, what's the route for those people to take, um, in this? Do they come in for variance? How does that work?
Mr. Chair, there's ways to actually, um, and Commissioner Thurston, to actually help with someone who is coming in to do it at a cheaper cost with those metal standards. Um, we've seen the faux brick go onto buildings. There's a spray stucco that makes posts look like it's stuccoed, but they're really not. Um, we would work with the applicant to get them to the best product that's going to match their home. We understand that we've had customers, or public come in, they have brick homes. You're not going to be able to build a brick one. And so we understand that, and so we're going to work with their compatibility to get them to their best options, understanding that cost is going to be an impact. This is just giving us a provision to say that, you know, we do want it to look like it. We want it to be stable and we want it to, you know, mimic more of the neighborhood, not necessarily just be, we've seen shade structures that are the 10 by 10 pop-ups. We had a windy day today, that is down the street and it's creating issues and concerns for our codes office as well as other neighbors. And so those are what we're trying to eliminate by allowing these. And so we'd work with the customers. If, um, the clients come in and they're unable to do it, or there's no way to actually mimic those homes, then yes, they could go through the variance process. But that's why variance could provide those justifications. Um, when you usually look at it, it's going to say, you know, is there actual justice, you know, justification to say that this doesn't work to meet the code? If these are concerns that keep coming up, that's where we're going to come back and do those amendments. We need to reevaluate and figure out how we're going to help the public get through the process.
So currently, the way it's written, it says the carport, carport design must be consistent with the main building. Does that wording allow you enough flexibility for staff to basically have a little bit of interpretation as to what consistent is? So we're not having, in the example that you gave of a, uh, s- center block home or a brick house, right? Will that give you enough leeway to be able to say that it's consistent with it? I'm solely semantics.
Commissioner Thurston, it does give us that leeway because I think when we actually work with people within the public, it's usually, what are your feasibilities? What are the possibilities? What are other materials that could be used? And a lot of times they are compatible. It's really right now, this is just getting implemented of knowing, we just want to get these permitted and understand what we can actually do, get them attached properly and know. So we, it does give us that flexibility to work with the public.
Thank you.
Perhaps just a suggestion, um, not necessarily a technical manual, but maybe staff can put some sort of one, two pager, front and back kind of examples of what would be considered appropriate so that people kind of have a starting point to work from. Might be helpful. Any other questions or comments on this chapter? Chapter three?
Once again, this is probably one of the questions that might not be in this one, but making sure that I don't skip it. Uh, missing middle housing? I'm, I'm trying to find out where the flexibility is in that for like, street designs. Is that in this one or is that going to be in a sub, in a different chapter? Because what I'm, with the mid, missing middle housing, our current code, I have tried personally to come in and do a missing middle development. And our current code requires me to have like, a whole bunch of variances to even do that. So I'm kind of waiting to see how to either do that or you got to through, go through a PUD process, other things like that. So does the, I, from what I understand so far, it seems like the missing middle housing is giving me the flexibility to do things, except for my one question on here, is the street sections allowed for missing middle? Do we have that anywhere?
We do have in the use chart, allowing the missing middle type uses by right. So, but that's more specifically the use. As far as roadway cross-sections, I don't believe we have anything specific to, um, deviations for missing middle housing.
Okay, would that be in this chapter or do I need to hold that question for another one?
Um, it would be in a later chapter, it would be in five dash two. However, I don't think it's, I don't think it's there either. Um, that, that was the relevant topic.
I will hold it for the next, for chapter five.
And Commissioner Thurston, I, I think if you go back to pages, starts on page 92, I believe those are essentially your density, your max density and some of your standard, um, design standards. So I, I think, um, just a lot of being involved with the technical advisory committee and what we're seeing now, I think, um, you know, we felt that there was, these provided that kind of design flexibility for developers to come in.
So that this use chart is, is, it's good the way we have it now. There's been a couple of iterations that has changed it to where we have the lot width minimum now, and that's the only thing. And that, that is absolutely wonderful for the city because it's going to allow a lot of, um, creativity of how to get mixing, uh, missing middle. Whereas the, the old code kind of restricted, they said, okay, we got, we need, um, well, even in this one, we, we, the, the current changes were saying, hey, we can put 16, um, units per acre. Well, then we put all the other restrictions of the lot depth and the lot size minimum, and then you go, I literally can't get 16 to the acre, the way it's written, if that's, if that's what it is. So those changes have been good. The only one that I still just needed to have clarification on is, is the actual road sections. Because when you go to Phoenix, when you go to Utah, when you go to Florida, you see all of these other developments. And you'll notice that everyone kind of has these different road sections of, one's only 20 feet wide, um, there's no sidewalks on some of them. And then you go to another one where there's basically no, there's no road in there and then they put all their cars in one area and then you have a cluster. So there's just a whole bunch of different design criterias that when you're actually designing the subdivision, that without having, I brought this up to David Weir also, and I said, without having an actual street section of what's allowed, it makes the process a little bit more lengthy. And so I just needed to find out where we can find those cross-sections or what's allowed, or maybe that's where the NACTO, is the NACTO probably re, uh, referred to there as we can use one of their cross-sections or other things like that? Because, um, just, and the concept itself of putting missing middle is great, but if you don't have the backing material to, to actually make it through fruition, it's really tough. So one of the things is the streets and the flexibility of streets is really, like I was in Santa Fe yesterday, you know, and then they have, they have a house and then there's parking lot in the back, but to get to the back, there was only like 11 feet. And so there's just those, those type of little things that you got to have in there that I'm, I'm just curious to make sure that we have that type of a design.
We do have in, in five dash two, there's a provision that allows the DRC to make some adjustments to the improvements. The wording is to meet city goals and plans. Um, so there, there's some flexibility in there. We don't have a designated, you know, pre-approved cross-section for it though.
And Mr. Chair, Commissioner Thurston, um, I would just like to add on to that. The reason being is because if there is different creative designs, we don't want to limit ourselves either. And so by using DRC, it provides us that flexibility to say that different cross-sections come in based on the design can be approved. Um, it's going through that process. If we were to outline, you know, all the possibilities, we still may get some that were never outlined, and so we don't want to limit it to that. We, we have our, essentially our locations of what we want to see to, you know, follow our complete streets and say we're meeting those designs. And then anything that's going to be different than those, that's where we want to work with our other departments, um, throughout the city where it's fire and public works, you know, traffic, just to ensure that we are still meeting the needs of what the city adopted with complete streets by moving forward with a new design.
Okay, I'll, I'll ask some more questions later on that.
All right, any other questions on chapter three? All right, seen none. Um, I just want to, um, acknowledge that we are at two hours, so it's 8:00 PM. We're probably, I think, about halfway, depending on how the conversation goes. But I'm wondering, do we want to take, uh, a five-minute recess bio break? And then when we come back, allow for public comment? And then finish our conversation after public comment? Does that work for everybody?
I'm, I'm good with the suggestion.
Okay, so we will reconvene at 8:05 and then we'll go into public comment um, so that you guys can, um, uh, speak. And then you are, are free to go home and go to sleep, eat dinner, whatever it is, and we'll continue the conversation. So, um, we'll reconvene in five minutes. Thank you. We'll go ahead and take our seats so we can get started. All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started here. We're gonna jump into, uh, public comments. And just before I do that, um, we've got a question here that I think I can address. So we, we are being recorded. This is, um, we are now returned to, um, being shown on the city's YouTube channel, similar to city council meetings. So this is live, um, and it will be recorded. So your comments will also be recorded and will be available for viewing after the fact as well. And I presumably, will there be minutes for this meeting? Yes? Yeah? Okay. So with that, um, we will go ahead and just open up to public comment. I'm going to give everybody a minute and a half to speak. Just a reminder, this is not a Q and A. So if you do have questions, please ask them. And, you know, we will try to get some answers, but, um, we're not gonna have, we don't have time to go back and forth with folks. So what I'll do is presumably everybody that's here tonight wishes to speak. So we'll just start over here to my left in the front and just work your way back. So when, um, the person in front of you sits down, um, let's just be orderly. We're all adults. We can figure this out. So, uh, just appreciate that, um, that process. So once we're done with this side of the room, we'll come over here. So we'll start here. You okay? You're good? All right. Next row back. And before you begin, please state your name for the record, second swear you in.
Christopher Brown.
And do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give us is the truth and nothing but the truth under penalty of law?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. Thank you for the chance to share some comments with you. My name is Christopher Brown. I'm a professor of geography and environmental studies at NMSU, and I've had the honor of serving on the TAC for the last eighteen months. I'd like to acknowledge the hard work that staff and Freeze Nichols have done to get us to this exciting point and for making needed changes with respect to missing middle housing. I'm especially happy to see the following changes that I urge you to retain in the draft as it moves through P and Z. Multi-family housing are allowed by rights citywide. It avoids the costly and time-consuming process of SUPs, eliminating unnecessary barriers to building high-quality housing, including walls and buffers. This also includes no longer restricting locations to multifamily districts with higher traffic volumes. Neighborhood centers are now recognized overlay district as key neighborhood intersections to allow for walkable community activity centers in single-family residential neighborhoods. It also supports the elimination of mandatory parking requirements and require, and the housing densities. I'd also like to see some enhancements to road cross-sections that would support multimodal and active transportation, especially the development of buffered or protected in-road bicycle facilities. I'm happy to provide details to the commission as the review process unfolds. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, next row. And luckily for everybody, as informed, I don't have to swear you into a work session. So you may come up. And, uh, please state your name for the record, and then you may begin.
My name is Beth Bardwell, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Southern New Mexico. And, um, Chairman and Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to comment. And we just wanted to, um, share that we are very pleased with changes that have been made since the June tenth version. And in particular, um, we are very happy to see that, um, missing middle housing, everything from auxiliary dwelling units all the way up to multifamily is now allowed by right in NH one, NH two, and NH three. We think that is, that's a very good thing, as long as they, and, and we've looked at the reasonable use-based standards, and they seem reasonable. And the density dwelling units per acre also seems reasonable. So we're very pleased with those changes. We're pleased that some of the, what we considered onerous use-based standards were removed for missing middle housing. We're very happy with the minimum off-street parking requirements. They seem to have been relaxed for some of the duplexes, triplexes, multifamily. And we are pleased to see that they're completely eliminated in the downtown, downtown and overlays. We're happy to see neighborhood centers are now a recognized overlay district. We think that's a great improvement. And we're also happy to see that the city now has what we consider very robust annexation process. So thank you very much for those changes, and we hope they continue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is John Holtzman. And I'd like to make some general comments on, uh, section five dash nine on outdoor lighting. Uh, about a year ago, um, we formed a chapter in New Mexico of an organization called Dark Sky International, which is based out of Tucson. It's an international organization that works on preservation of natural skies through promotion of responsible lighting. And, uh, I was pleased and commend the city for, you know, for paying attention. It's, it's clear in the draft that there is some good stuff and good thoughts on responsible lighting. And I submitted a few comments a few months ago, uh, most of which I think were incorporated. However, in the last couple of months, there have been a few interesting new developments. In particular, the city of Albuquerque adopted in their, uh, development code a strong section on outdoor lighting. And Dark Sky International released a draft municipal ordinance. And it was significantly revised over their draft from ten years ago. And I kind of feel like a lot of what's in the current Las Cruces one is based on that older one. So I have a list of specific things which I will pass on in writing, but I'm not the lighting expert. I've been learning a lot. But it really seems like it's an opportunity to take advantage of some of the work and try to establish some consistency across the state on this issue. And now's, now's the time to do it. It's a shame that it just came in so late in the process, but that's just, just how it is. So hopefully people could take a look at that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Mr. Chairs, Commissioners. My name is Nick Chignoli. I just wanted to echo the expansion of the varieties and density of housing. Through my work with the Doña County Resilience Leaders, I've seen the importance of stable housing in the community. There is an endless amount of data that indicates that housing is a primary determinant of both mental and physical health outcomes. Housing security is correlated from everything to clinical depression to low birth weight, the fundamental aspect of survival. By expanding these regulations, we are providing an opportunity for the diverse lifestyles of Las Cruces. These multi-unit residences and auxiliary dwellings help provide Gen Z and millennials with the opportunity to save money while having housing appropriate to their lifestyle. It allows service workers to live closer to their place of employment, and seniors and veterans on fixed incomes to have appropriate accommodations. I also think it's worth noting that, um, a recent literature review found that provisional housing has reduced Medicaid usage by twelve percent. The use of primary care physicians, excuse me, uh, has rose, risen by twenty percent, while emergency room visits decreased by eighteen percent. The actual, the offset costs are debatable. But, uh, one, one study reports that, uh, provisional housing offsets healthcare costs by twenty-nine thousand dollars per person. So put simply, housing security saves money. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next row. None. Row after that.
My name is Shahid Mustafa, and I'm representing, uh, Taylorhood Farms and the New Mexico Agrarian Commons. And I would like to commend you on all the work that you've done and ask that you continue to consider spaces for community gardens and also recognition of native lands that exist within the city's own. Thank you.
Thank you. Next row.
Faith Hudson for the record. Overall, I want to say that I think chapter two draft is a very well-crafted and a better document than chapter forty. However, there are some critical issues that I hope the P and Z Commission will recommend changing in their approval of the chapter two draft. A commission is a decision-making authority and may be empowered to make binding recommendations or take action. In an email dated September fifth, twenty twenty-four, Mr. Faver wrote to the Historic Preservation Chair and stated that since the HPC serves as a reviewing and recommending body rather than a decision-making one like the Planning and Zoning Commission, it is more appropriate under the City of Las Cruces Municipal Government Structure to designate Historic Preservation as a committee rather than a commission. As former Chair of the Las Cruces Historic Preservation Commission, I think this is a mischaracterization. I want to speak about some specific language that is in the current chapter two draft that is unchanged from chapter forty. Decisions by Community Development Director can be appealed to the HPC. This is an indication that HPC is a quasi, quasi-judicating, uh, quasi-judicial adjudicating body. Decisions by the HPC can be appealed to P and Z. Again, another indication that the HPC is a quasi-judicating, uh, body. Consideration, the HPC considers, solicits testimony, and makes written findings of fact. And they weigh evidence of measurement.
Sorry, we've gotta be able to move forward, but I appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
I really want you to stop talking. All right.
Good evening, for the record. My name is Dr. Judy Berryman. I am the current Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission. As other people have met, noted, I would like to compliment your committee and realize Las Cruces for the many changes that have been shown in chapter two. The Historic Preservation Commission fully supports the need for revisions to the city development codes. The commission is an important component to the community development and allows the public and the city to determine what historic resources are considered important. And in many cases, a direction written in the previous chapter forty and chapter two is the public's only legal representation on how historic resources should be preserved. I would sincerely request that a work session be set up between your commission and the Historic Preservation so that we can discuss some of the specific issues that were in the discussion in question. I will not discuss whether the change from commission to committee is appropriate or not because it's already been discussed. But we would like to see the change in chapter two to go back to commission as it was authorized for the city, uh, city council in chapter forty. The second change that we would like is that, um, there does not need to be a holder for the Historic Preservation Specialist. As the City of Las Cruces has gone into agreements with the federal and state governments in terms of historic preservation, there does need to be a specialist written into the document. And my question would be, there is a specialist right now being interviewed, and so that position does need to be put into the document. And, um, again, I would request that we have a work session between the two groups so that we could discuss specific issues. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next row.
Good evening, I'm John Verplu for the record. Commissioner, Chair, I appreciate the chance to address you this evening. I would just like to make two points about chapter two. And that is that some of the changes that have been wrought over the last couple of months, we haven't had a chance yet to make public comment to, um, through the course of canceled meetings or other occasions that have, that have come up. We haven't had, that's, ball's been hidden from us to a certain extent. And so I'd like to address the fact that, um, within the designation of the Historic Preservation Commission as a, as a committee, I think that they're not just semantics. That, um, as my wife was about to say, that they solicit testimony, fact find, they are held to standards of review, they adjudicate questions, and can be appealed on those decisions. So those are, those are not just minor semantics about the way that that commission is to operate. A commission, I think, will just defang the whole chapter two as far as the, the intent and the character of that, of that portion of it. Secondly, I'd, I'd like to say too, that, um, the idea that you would not, no longer have a, a specialist, um, conducting the duties of that Historic Preservation Specialist, you know, I can see that if you are understaffed, that you might relate to director and put that decision-making at that point. But you can also, the opposite can be true as well. That person can be, um, that designee if the director needs to make those decisions. And so I think it, I find it important that that specialized, specific kinds of job duties are, are assigned to that person because it's a full-time position.
Thank you.
Chair, for the record, I'm Dr. Paul Deason. And I want to again thank the staff for the work done on chapter, uh, the Elevate Las Cruces, especially revisions of chapter two. Several points I want to make. First of all, the two historic districts that are not included because they weren't, uh, not in the two thousand and one are the Macia Park Historic District and the Elephant Butte Historic District. Both need to be identified as they are nationally. Second, um, by having, eliminating the title of commission and eliminating the Historic Preservation Specialist and specified as that in the document, you are eliminating the possibility for City of Las Cruces to continue as a certified local government, uh, identified in national and state historic preservations, and also eliminating the chance for a lot of money to come and to be able to assist in preservation. Lastly, I would like to have specified in the chapter two that when they're talking about demolition, that they are specifying in historic districts and for historic properties, the process of, uh, deconstruction so that the material, the historic material can be used for future. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any final folks on this side of the room? Nope. All right, coming over here, we'll just go front to back. We'll start with the, the back row. Sorry. All right, next, next row up? All right, next, next row up.
Joe Ruprecht for the record. I am not a member of the Historic Preservation Commission. I have been an observer and been participating in historic preservation efforts for more than 20 years. I want to point out that historic preservation is more than let's just save something that looks pretty. And when I was involved in participating in some of the initial National Trust efforts to create the National Register of Historic Places, it was clear that there were divisions within the preservation community. Part of what's evolved from that is that the preservation guidelines are really very nuts and bolts, very specific. And there's a lot of structure to the state and federal statutes that not most people grasp. You really need a specialist on staff who is thoroughly familiar with those guidelines and who can work with them on a daily basis rather than thinking that anybody who is in community development can handle this task. And I think we've seen that this evening simply by the fact that there's been more discussion about the adding of a carport to a single-family structure than to anything having to do with historic buildings in a civic sense this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's George Pearson. I'm Vice President of Velocrusis, which is a bike ped advocacy organization, nonprofit in Las Cruces. Realize mirrors current code in that it requires bicycle parking only for new construction. There is wording to require bike parking after a certain threshold of changes to a property, but in practice, this hasn't made any changes to require parking. We've seen changes to Walmarts and Albertsons where bike parking is simply lost. Realize needs to be modified to require bicycle parking for existing properties. There can be reasonable requirement, like it applies only, say, if you have 15 vehicle parking spots, then require bike parking, and it can be phased in over a number of years. Requiring bicycle parking in this way helps with several goals that improve the quality of life. A sustainability office has had council work sessions about how much vehicle transportation causes pollution. There are economic and health benefits to bicycling. We need to be working towards a mode shift, and that can be done if we have safe and secure bicycle parking, so people that choose to commute to work and stop at the grocery store on the way home. And this was discussed at the Technical Advisory Committee. There was no pushback from anybody. So I was kind of surprised that this was not included in the code. So I would ask that this commission recommend a change to require bicycle parking for existing properties. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next row.
Commission and staff. My name's Jody Crowley. I'm with the AARP of Las Cruces, also of New Mexico. I'd like to commend you for the, all the changes that are supporting missing middle and especially ADU. Many, many seniors want to age in place. Most seniors want to age in place. Anything you can do that will encourage and facilitate multigenerational families would be of use. Seniors are one of the largest age groups. They're, they're increasing. And so the awareness of the needs of seniors would be a real benefit to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others in that row?
Hello, my name is Don Kurtz, and I, during the first couple of hours where we got to watch you go through this, I got, I really congratulate you. I think it was wonderful, your experience and, and the issues you raised were great. I think consultant's work was good. I really appreciate the staff's answers. And this has been part of a process really that began all the way back with Elevate, where I think the city has really acted dynamically to make this a good place and meet the goals of a, of a prosperous, livable city. And I think it's been great. That said, I hope you will, as time goes on and, and as this moves through with your comments and things towards the council, often people emerge at the last second and they're all of a sudden interested in this and, and raise all kinds of objections. And I, I hope, of course, you'll listen carefully, but that you will stand firm on the things that are the essence of this, of this realize effort, this realize effort, and especially the variability of housing, which I think will be, is very important. And I speak as a person in exactly the kind of neighborhood I think you're kind of, you're creating. I live in a townhouse myself. Behind us, there's an apartment complex. We're surrounded by single-family housing and have been there 35 years, watched our neighbors grow up on either side of us. It's, it's a good, active neighborhood, and I think that's where we're trying to arrive. So thank you for your work. I appreciate you staying on after we leave and keeping this going.
Thank you. All right, anybody else on this side of the room? All right, last call for anyone who has not spoken. All right, we will close public comment. Thank you. You are more than welcome to stay and listen to the conversation, but we won't be offended if you leave. So thank you for coming out this evening. Thanks for your patience. Thanks for your input.
Are we jumping, are we jumping back into Chapter Three or are we moving to Chapter Four?
I think we can move on to Chapter Four.
Okay, I agree.
So take a minute to review your notes, but feel free to chime in if you've got something.
On, on your slideshow, can you go back to page 33? I, I just have a note here and I'm making sure it's not in this, in... No, that's a different chapter then. And page 34. Okay, I don't know why I got page 34 on here then, because there's nothing there. Thank you. No, I just got a note here, page 34, and I wanted to make sure that was, that was correct, but there's clearly nothing on that page.
I don't have any comments for number four, but jumping ahead, spelling mistakes for Sarah, page 351. IX, I think minimum is spelt wrong. Correct me if I'm wrong. And then C at the very bottom, notice of W. I think the W should not be there.
Okay, you said those really fast. Repeat what you just said so I can write these down.
351, IX, at the end of the sentence, it says minimum, which is MM1MUM. And then C at the very bottom of that page, be given written notice of W, the permit, permitted elevation. I feel like W should not be there.
On Chapter Four, I think just the same comment I made earlier about the, that initial question being, does the property have the correct zoning? It should be the other way around. Does your project need zoning? And then you go from there. Section 4-3A under Master Plan Development. Section 4-3A1A, where it references basically the purpose of the Master Plan Development is to advance the, the goals and objectives of the city's comprehensive plan. I would also add, and the other adopted policies, just to make it clear that it's more than just the comp plan. And that would be consistent, I think, across the board. We've already stated those. I guess more of a clarifying, so on the same page, and this is 277 by the way, under 2B2, annexations where substantial development is not anticipated, how are we defining substantial development? Is there a definition?
I do not think we have a definition right now.
Is that something that we can define? Because substantial on its own seems subjective. And I, I think in the context in which it is located in the, that a master plan may be omitted, I think it's important that we try to be more objective.
I got a clarification. I brought this up at the very beginning with David Weir. I just want to make sure I'm understanding this correctly. On a master plan development, you don't have to have a master plan development as long as you do it with one phase. Is that... So if, if a developer comes in and he says, hey, I'm going to do 20 acres, it's 100 lots, but I'm going to do all of the development at once, that does not need a master development plan. Is that correct?
Correct, only if it's phased.
Okay, so it's only if it's phased, and then, then the 30 or fewer lots kicks in. Is that correct? With 30 or fewer lots? Because originally, it was, it was, at the very beginning, was any more than 30 lots, you would have to have a development, a master plan. And then we, we removed that. So I'm just making sure that still stands the way it is, because the 30 throws me off.
Commissioner Thurston, I believe the 30 lots was removed. So it's only stating what's required, which those would be the three. So it's if you're dividing into various phases, if you're doing an annexation, and then when you're going to use the alternate summary process for subdividing.
Okay, so on 277, mine still says with 30, with 30 or fewer lots. So is that, is that removed on yours?
What number are you on?
So page 270, section 4-3A, Master Plan 2B1.
That's to allow the, the director to omit the requirement for a master development plan if there are two phases. So if you're doing a two-phase development, without that provision, you will be required to do a master development plan. If you're doing a two-phase development, but there's fewer than 30 lots, then the director can still determine that you don't need it.
I just needed clarification on that. Thank you. Then it's good.
All right, final comments on section four, Chapter Four, sorry. All right, moving on to Development Standards, Chapter Five. I have a feeling we're going to have a lot to say here. Go for it.
Most of my notes are on Chapter Five. The, I'm going to bring it back up to just the building of new roads and fixing of old roads. One of the issues that I had a long time ago was, I'm going to bring back Delray as a good example, and I'm not sure how to fix this yet, and I don't think it's in the code. And it's in a development where, in a road section where a development is already finished, and it's sat there. So there are some of these that we have throughout the city that have sat there for 10 years, 20 years. Delray is a perfect example of the building on the west side of Delray, right before the Park Hill subdivision. There's one on the left. It goes from, when you leave the underpass of, of Highway 70 and you go underneath, so then now you're on a, where Ashley Furniture is and all that, that's a four, four lane. You keep going and then it goes down to a two lane, and then it jumps back up to a four lane. So in the future, when whoever the developer on the east side is, because the development has already happened on the west side of the road, when it happens on the east, we're only going to get the other, that side of the road finished. So you're going to go now from a four lane, and then when they develop it on the right, because the left has already been developed, if, if you're tracking with me here, we're going to have a, now a four lane to a three lane, and there's no way that we're going to get the left side of that road built because the development has already happened. So with that, I'm just trying to find a way. I've had discussions in the past, and it says, well, we don't have anything in our ordinance that allows the city to basically build that extra little road, to complete a road. So I'm, I'm more wondering on completion of roads when development is already done, and we have new development on that half. But how do we actually finish off those small sections throughout the city? What, what provisions, what, what can we put in there to actually finalize some of these roads? And, and that's just a one example, but as, as staff, you guys probably know of, you know, 100 different locations that this is happening. And so is there anything that we can put in here that allows the city, whether the city wants to or not, but it actually has wording in there that says, if we want to do this, we have something that says we can? Because currently, I believe it's written that the city cannot do it unless there's other hoops that we have to jump through. You guys have to help me on that clarification of it, but can you give me some feedback as to how do we fix that problem with our new code here?
Either, either city staff or Fred can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't know of anything that would prevent the city from, if they wanted to do a capital improvement project, they may have to acquire right-of-way if the right-of-way wasn't dedicated at that time. But if the, if the site is already developed and that it's not redeveloping, improve the road, and the city wants to go in and complete the project, I don't know of anything that would be stopping the city.
I can't remember exactly what it was, but I was, I was told through staff, oh, this is probably like four or five years ago though, that there was no provision with the city to allow that to happen. I don't know what, there was, there was other, there was other things in there, and I, and I, so I was just saying, how do we get this? And they were, I can't even remember the individual that I was chatting with at the time. But anyways, there, I would love to find a way to actually do that. Is there like a tax bond? Is there like, are there ways to improve it? Because as of right now, the code mostly, most of the roads are built by the developers, right? And so we wait, and we wait, and we wait. Now you do see like a Roadrunner that was, Roadrunner was put in and the bridge was put in over there. I don't know how that actually happened, but what process they had to go through. But if, I guess what I'm, I'm trying to just allude to is, is how do we fix the problem?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Thurston, that, that is a good question. That is something that comes up periodically, and that's probably something that would have to be addressed specifically with the capital, the CIP plan and maybe a process there. So I'm not sure we can come to give you an answer this evening, but that is something that we can look at with staff. And if we're not able to figure out a way to address that before adoption, definitely something that we can address with, with staff as we move forward and maybe find some way to amend something down the road. But it's a good point. It's something that we can continue to discuss with staff, but I'm not really sure what the answers would be without bringing City Manager's Office, Long Range Planning, a lot of other departments together, Public Works, to really kind of hash that out. But it is a good point, and we'll, we'll take note of that and see if we can figure out a process moving forward.
Thanks. I just, we see it throughout the city, and it does come up all the time as we're developing little lots here and there. And so I just, that, that's, we can have a discussion later over it and figure out how to do that, like you're saying. That's one, I've got one more item crossed off here.
I'm going to page 370. Just a general question, maybe you can clarify. What's like the current dedication in regards to parks? And the fees that are applicable to the developers with this current code? Is it 370?
Mr. Chair, we've got staff from the Parks Department that can answer questions related to that.
I heard the question, but I'm not sure I completely got all of it. Will you repeat that, sir, please?
I guess in the current code, is there a, are we changing from the current code to something new in this code? As far as like reducing fees or anything in regards to dedication of the parks?
So Realized Loss Cruises is, oh, thank you. Stephen Bam, Parks and Recreation Director. Realized Loss Cruises currently is written, is going to a model in which there's park dedication for neighborhood parks, much like a fire hydrant or a local road, and to be built at the front end with the development. And then we do need to finish a study for impact fees for the other portion that's unrelated to this code but interacts, and that will come forward in the next spring.
And that dedication part for neighborhood parks, that's new, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And that dedication is solely on the developer to provide the cost to, and the city doesn't chip in on any of the costs associated with the park?
There are two vehicles for building parks. One is park dedication, and the other one is impact fees. The current proposal, or currently, all of that is handled through impact fees. But the change is going to remove, is proposing that you remove neighborhood parks, and it would be removed from the impact fee and be put in as park dedication. Currently, there's no park dedication. So we're going to go to, from just impact fees, to a portion coming through park dedication, and then a separate, distinct, different portion coming through impact fees.
Okay, so right now, there's an impact fee that of course connects to city utilities, water, sewer, or whatnot, that is paid by most likely the buyer of a new construction home, sometimes developer. You're splitting that to add another one? Or pulling out from the impact fees to add the dedication fee?
So the current impact fee is $2,600. That impact fee was passed 10 years ago. It was not the full recommended amount to maintain the current level of service, which was the level of service for neighborhood parks, community parks, trails, aquatics, and natorium-type facilities. We didn't have the natorium at the time, but swimming pools, and for recreation centers. What is being proposed in this rewrite is that neighborhood parks would come through the development as something like you would a fire hydrant. And that would be on the front end. That the cost of that would be removed from the impact fee. Okay, and it's going to be separated. So there would be a park dedication, which is a vehicle that hasn't been used here before, but has been in effect in the country since the 1960s. And, and so there'll be a portion, which will, you know, the pools, the rec centers, the community parks, the regional parks, the trails, currently are staying, you know, in the impact fee, in the proposal, just the neighborhood park portion. And you can't be double, you know, charged. You can't have the neighborhood be part of the impact fee and also part of the park dedication. You have to choose which vehicle you're using.
If I, if I could add to that also, part of the reason for removing neighborhood parks from impact fees and instead doing the dedication route is that the city would rather have a developer dedicate and build their own park within the subdivision, instead of giving a fee in lieu, and then it's difficult to have a nearby park to serve the residents of the subdivision that's being built. So the idea would be, if you're building a larger subdivision, you're going to dedicate the land within your subdivision to serve the additional residents that you're adding. So that's some of the rationale for pulling it out from impact fees and doing it through land dedication. The larger parks, the community and regional parks that are being addressed through impact fees, those are more of a larger scale where it does make more sense for the city to get an impact fee, and then the city can plan for those larger parks.
All right, I got philosophy difference on this. The, what currently is happening is developers will come in, so you can, we can come in and put a, well, let me give you a personal example. Rincon Hills is one of the subdivisions we did as Ken Thurston Development. We came in and we did a three-acre park, and it was 221 lots. So when we came in, we are able to receive $2,600 back per house. So the amount of money that we would put in, say there's the 221 lots, you times that by $2,600, then that $2,600 is the amount of money that I can spend on that neighborhood park. So I spend that money on the neighborhood park, and then I get reimbursed back. Now ultimately, when I go, now when I switch companies, right, from the development company to the housing company. So the development company got reimbursed for the park, right? So that money has kind of washed off. Now as a home builder, I come in and I pay a $2,600 fee to the city, okay? So that's where the city gets the money to basically pay this park fee that basically reimbursed the developer. So at the end, you have a $2,600 fee that goes to the end user, so the person buying the home. So we have $2,600. Then the builder, in the instance, you will then mark up everything as any business, a grocery store, a t-shirt business, everything that you do, you then put your markup on it, and then you turn around and you sell it to the end user. Well, by changing this, as a developer and as a home builder, we're, I'm a little bit nervous that I will then have to put in the park, okay? I'll put the park in. I don't get reimbursed anymore on the development side. So where does that cost go? I am going to put that cost back onto the sale of the home. Well, if, now this is, this is the if question in here, is if the park impact fees that are $2,600 stay the same, because the new park impact fee that comes in, or the park impact study that comes in, then says, we still need a $2,600 park fee on top of the park that the developer is now required to dedicate, we will then take that $2,600 and we will tack it on to the sale of that home. So the issue is, is a $2,600 park fee can now turn into, which it's still $2,600, but now we put these additional park, neighborhood park that I'm required to do to put in. So now, 2,600 plus 2,600 can end up being $5,200 to the end user, right? But you also put a markup on it, as every single business does to stay in business. And so that $5,200, depending on who you are, can, will increase to the end user. So a little bit nervous on every single one of my homes going up, you know? And if we're trying to keep the affordability of homes, where this could be one where it's not really going to create the affordability, it could, it could actually cause our houses to go up a little bit more. So I have a little bit of issue with that on the fact that the unknown is, what, what is the study of the park impact fee going to come back and say? So if it comes back and says, hey, your Los Cruces is still at a deficit. So if, if we are trying to get to a, so the national average, which I am starting to understand, is a 10, 10 acres per thousand humans. Is that correct? 10 acres per thousand people. We are trying to achieve a 6, is that correct?
So, so the national average is between 10.2 and 10.6, depending on the size of the community, for total parkland and open space, okay? The regional, or the, the parkland, like neighborhood parks, community parks and that, is coming in around between 5 and 7, depending on the community. That's typically where that runs, yes.
So right now, the, the reason why, at least my understanding of this, why the, why the parks are changing is because we are trying to take Los Cruces to a healthier city, a more, you know, there's more parks, there's more things to do for the youth, there's other things. So I see the pros, the pros of it in trying to make our city a little bit better, but there's still the little bit of kinks in there of, how do we make it better? But how do we also not cause all of the cost to go up? And then how do we prevent the unknown of what a park fee is going to be? One of the suggestions that has came through is to, from the development side, is to leave a reimbursement for neighborhood parks in that park impact fee. And the number that we have thrown around was 50%. So what this would look like is, as a developer, I would come in, I would build the park. However many units I have in there, I could get my, what would that be? $1,300 per house. So I would have to keep contributing a little bit to those parks to get them to where I need to. But it, it also helps the developer, in one instance, of having some type of an understanding or some type of a buffer to them as to what this new park impact fee is going to come in at. So if the park impact fee goes to $3,600, it still allows the developer to get reimbursed some. So there is a little bit of a buffer that goes to, goes to the developer. Because what, the fear that we're having is, okay, if we do it this way, we have just increased the cost to everything. And what we're trying to do is at least have some little bit of, I guess like a safety net type of a deal, of leaving a percentage allowed for reimbursement for neighborhood parks. Not 100% anymore, because that's where, that's, currently, we were just getting 100% basically for neighborhood parks. So what you see is, and that's happening still currently until the new code, then we're just saying, hey, maybe we reduce it from maybe 100%, but we leave it at the 50%. And then that still allows the city, out of the $2,600, they'll have that $1,300 to be able to do the other items that are not neighborhood parks. There, it, for us, as developers and home builders, we think that's a way that it'll help at least prevent some of the costs of the homes to increase than the way that we currently see it right here. That's kind of our view of it. I'll go ahead and let you guys talk now.
I think you kind of said it perfectly. Because my main concern was, of course, we want to have parks and whatnot, and they provide for the community. I personally don't use them, but that's my own choice. But affordability comes into question where if the developer has more costs on his end, he's just going to put it to the end user, the buyer of the new construction home, which essentially then would go to me. So I think if there's a solution to come to a compromise, I know that KT Homes is probably not the only developer that has raised concern into that. But we kind of want to make sure that we're coming to a compromise so that we can continue to have development, so that we can have more housing, so that affordability continues to go in to the right direction that we needed to.
I just wanted to add something to you guys commissioners. Again, this is not my line of business, so I'm, I mean, miss me if I'm wrong with any of this. I'm just, you know, voicing the, I guess, observation for what the last 10 years, housing prices seemingly like doubled, right? And I know you're going to know more stats on that than me, but what is the inventory of housing out there reflecting on the end user's price versus this development reimbursement? And how do you, you know, control one factor to another, I suppose, on where that inflation, I guess, or whatever you want to call it, fees get passed along? But it's like, you know, if, again, if 5,200 isn't going to be 5,200, and you're going to get marked up to 7,500, you know, in terms of all the other places where margin gets tacked on, on a, you know, a developer or real estate and whatever, I mean, I guess, to me, I'm just, just curious on your thoughts of that, because it seems like a lot to control. And not that I would want our developers to have to pay more and thus force the price to go up. I just, it seems like a lot to corral.
We've had, behind the scenes, we've had three or four meetings with parks on this one. Because it is, it's not a, this one's not like an easy subject of, hey, how do we, how do we increase the level of service of parks? Because then there's all of the data that shows why having parks in a, in a community is great, right? All the health benefits. And then we have other data that shows, hey, even when you go up $1,000 on a house, you cut out, it's like 75 people from just our market. And we have, we have some studies from the NAHB that shows every time you go up $1,000, you're cutting more people out of the market. So it's, it's a delicate, it's a delicate way to, like, it's a balance, right? It's this dance that has to happen of, how do we, how do we keep the cost down, but how do we still give the more service? And so it really is, it really is hard. The, the one thing I am going to say about this new code, not necessarily parks, this, this new code will help us, some of these clusters, other mixed-use development and things like that, is going to allow us to be able to get that price point back down to where we're at. So in 2020, we had our model home, and we used to sell an 1,871 square foot home, four-bedroom, two-bath, $217,000. Today, that same house, if we sell it, it's like $358,000. So parks, to, you know, if you look at the whole scheme of things, parks is not the one that's going to raise our prices from 217 to 358, right? But every, you know, another $5,000 that I got to tack on to a home does hurt, you know? And so, but it's not necessarily just, it's, if you look at the market right now, you're starting to see that, that we're starting to price people out of the market in multiple ways. And so, you know, as, as the market dictates, we change, we adapt, we move, along with the market to find a way to get these more houses. And so this development code will help lower some of the pricing, like you can see in the Phoenix areas, that you actually can get the missing middle. So missing middle is going to help some of the affordability and fighting against the inflation that we have. But the parks itself is something that, like, me personally, I love parks. I love them. You can look at my development, and you can see in Rincon Hills, I think we're, we're meeting the standard that parks wants us to meet in, in the one that we did. And so I try to do that, I think it's, I think it's a benefit, there's health benefits, there's all that kind of stuff. We just want to make sure that we're not, we're doing this balancing act to where we're trying to get maximize, maximize it to the end user without trying to raise the price of homes just because of a, of a new ordinance that comes in. Does that, does that help at all?
Yes, it sure does. And I mean, I guess the further commentary I had on that, for instance, talking about like tree removal permitting and things like that, I guess I don't entirely know what the maintenance and the upkeep of, you know, particularly a two-foot tree, and the water requirements are going to, you know, require over, you know, the life of that tree versus, for instance, more desert environment, drought tolerant kind of plants and stuff. So I guess those were kind of things on like, where can cost be controlled in different places over a long period of time versus maybe passed on to the developer or the end user? I don't know, and again, this is just the commentary.
I have, I have a couple more questions on, on the park for you guys, if that's okay. So page 365, parkland dedication. And also if you'll go on your, I believe it's page 33 on your, on your slideshow here. So if you go to C, parkland, parkland dedication. So, if you go to C, parkland, parkland dedication, number two, just a, we, we need to update your mathematical equation on the, in the booklet. In the, on your section, on this slideshow, it's correct. So, if you do the math here, there's the, the little divide by 1,000 people. On this 365, it says equals acres to be dedicated on population. So, if you try to actually use this formula, it doesn't work, but you want on your slideshow works.
I think it's a formatting issue, the thousands all the way over.
I'm not right, yeah. So, that's just a small, that was just a small little thing that you can fix on that one.
Mr. Thurston, yeah, we were looking at my version versus Sarah's version, and it appears to be a formatting issue depending upon how it was printed out, and, and so, we'll take a look at that.
Awesome. Now, I go on to, it's still under C, four, C for A, land dedication for a neighborhood park shall be a minimum of three continuous acres in size. If you follow down, it'll also say that walk shed, on C, walk sheds of a quarter mile will be provided. And then, so on those two, I, my question is here, do you have any examples for us what that actually looks like? Because this is looking like every half a mile, I have a three-acre park. Do you have examples of that that we can actually see to?
Commissioner Thurston, members of the commission, that, that's something that we can pull for you. It's a recommendation that comes directly out of our Parks Master Plan, but you're correct in your assessment of what that actually means, and we can see if we can get some examples that can show you what that looks like.
Thank you. Then, the other part of that is, the reason why I want the, the examples is because when I come in and, or not me necessarily, but a developer comes in and they are trying to do this, this missing middle, and I have to dedicate three acres versus these pocket parks that you'll notice if you go and look on, online, go to Google Earth, and just start zooming in all over the places that are actually having this missing middle, and you'll notice a lot of smaller parks. And you're not gonna see a three-acre park that's always there. And so, I have a little bit of design criteria issues that this is gonna, this is gonna create, some issues when we're trying to do urban areas, when we're trying to still create the walkability, we're trying to create the trails, and the minimum is a three-acre dedication, that's gonna cause a little bit of hindrance in the design process of building. So, I just wanted to bring that up, that might be of further discussions on how, how do you actually achieve three acres when we're trying to densify some of these places?
And I would second that comment, too. I, I think it kind of handcuffs us in many ways. Having lived in more urban areas, yes, you want to have your larger, you know, fields that you can throw a football around in or, or baseball or whatever, but there's something to be said to just finding that little nook and cranny, that's all the, all the, your own for that, you know, 30 minutes that you're there. We don't need to, you know, slice it up into little, little tiny pieces, but I think having some flexibility there, particularly in our urban core, I, I think we should highly consider that, and that would be my recommendation as well.
On, on D, it says, land must not be located on a cul-de-sac. Once again, I'm gonna go back to Google Earth, and I look down in the Phoenix Valley, and what you'll see is in order for, we're, we're trying to promote a lot of these trails, right? And open spaces, and what I've seen down there is they actually do two cul-de-sacs that will join together, well, not totally join, but then it creates that open space for that trail to come throughout the entire, the entire neighborhood, to still keep that contiguous. So, if, if you are gonna require it to be a three acre, one of the good ways to be able to do that is if I make that park a little bit skinnier, right? And now, I make three acres in a longer fashion. Well, I want these access points possibly by cul-de-sacs, and also, the cul-de-sacs are good places for people to park. So, there might be other design criterias that we can, instead of the cul-de-sac having the houses on the end, the cul-de-sacs are there, but also for parking for parks. So, I, there's a couple little design criterias that, that way, that I'm not, I'm not a fan of not allowing a park to be on a cul-de-sac because of that. Also, in H3, within 100-year flood, you can't put a park. I love park ponds, Rincon Hills is a park pond. It allowed me and the citizens to actually use a park pretty much 99% of the time in Las Cruces, because it does not rain here very often. And because it doesn't rain here very often, that allows us to use more parks. So, in our specific park, we were not allowed to take the drainage and calculate it into the overall, I believe, park reimbursement or so, there, there was something to do with that. And so, we kept it outside of it, but it allowed that extra like 0.75 of an acre to be put in, and then we grasped it and everything. And so, now, today, if you go over there, you'll see a lot of kids playing it in soccer. But I do understand that on the park side, there is a little bit of hesitancy for wanting to do that, because there is a difference, we, parks is parks, drainage is drainage, right? And they, they don't want these two mixed, they're, you know, if we do ask Steve, I'm pretty sure Steve's gonna say, hey, it, it brings weeds in when the wind, you know, when the, when it rains, it brings the weeds in, and then it's a little bit harder to, to deal with. However, the, the overall good, I think, outweighs the bad in being allowed to have that 100-year flood. If you wanna have any comments on that, there's, if not, I'll keep going.
I did have one comment on that for the, just to be sure that you saw that, that's no more than half the park can be in the 100-year floodplain, so half of the park can be in a floodplain, just not the entire park.
Okay, that's good, then. At least it's there.
Steve Bam, Parks and Recreation Director. There's a lot of comments that have been made, and a couple things I think ought to be added to the conversation is, is not only is that quarter-mile standard in our adopted master plan, but it is also the standard that is recommended across the nation and is adopted in a lot of the communities. The, the other thing is, is when we looked at the acreage and we went with three acres minimum, that was one of the lowest that we were seeing. We, we found a lot of our communities that were up for neighborhood minimums, up to five acres as a minimum requirement. I, I don't think we dislike having parks that have some shared space with some drainage, but it has to be done right, and it has to be done in a way that it's not just the leftovers that minimize the, the play value and the park value to the residents. And so, I think there's some compromise and some creativity that is needed there.
All right.
While you're, while you're finding your next talking point, I have got one sticking on the topic of parks for the moment. This is page 368 in my copy, this is under criteria for dedication. This is, yes?
Chris Faver, for the record, you don't currently have a quorum.
We gotta wait.
Okay, hold on that, then.
Is, is that the rules, we gotta wait if he's, if he's gone? Okay.
Can I give a spelling suggestion? All right, we've got quorum again. So, my, my comment was on page 368, this is under, in parks, under G, criteria for dedication. Number two is land dedication for open space or unimproved parkland must be preserved in its pre-development state. I'd offer up that restoration projects should also be considered. I know there's a lot of quote, natural develop, or desert out here, that's probably not really natural anymore. So, I think having some restoration options would be a good thing. I think that would also open up opportunities for the more urban part of town, where perhaps arroyos that have been channelized could be unchanneled. And then, I think my, so, I'm not the park expert here in the room, but I think generally speaking, I agree with, I think, most of what's in here with, I think the exception of having just more flexibility in the design of the parks. I don't think we should be putting our eggs all in one basket of a three-acre contiguous. I think we should allow for site constraints to factor in there. I think the total amount is reasonable in most cases. I am a little concerned with that number for our more urban part of town. I guess you would just do your in-lu fee in that situation, but something to consider there. But overall, I think, you know, the approach from the, the development standard side, I agree with. The impact fee part, I'll leave that to other people to hash out. I would just say we'd be flexible and willing, if things don't work in the future the way that we thought they were, that, you know, there's a recognition that we can come back and, and make changes. So, that would just be my comment on that. But I have no further comments on parks.
Okay, I got another one. Going back, well, going back to C, parkland, five, parkland improvements, installation requirement, improvements shall defer to the Parks and Rec Facility Standards Manual. One, do we have that, we don't have that manual yet, right? Okay, so, I just needed, I just have the note in here that says we'd like to see that someday. And then, and be coordinated with and approved by the park director or their designee. The word parks director or their designee, one thing that has happened to me in the past seven years, 10 years of doing this, is, I call it the regime change, right? When one park director leaves and I get a new park director, so do the rules change? And then, when I get another one, so do the rules change again? And so, sometimes it is frustrating to know, to not know what you're going to do as a developer. When you are developing land, there is a, time is of the essence in some cases, and when you are waiting on a park director or something to come back from parks, and you do not get an answer, and you wait, you then move forward in your development, knowing that you're gonna put this park in here. And so, we don't have, we don't have agreements signed, we don't have other things like that, but there's also no way of me understanding what is required of me to put in that park currently. And so, if I move forward, I'm taking my best guess that what I'm gonna put, get put in is what the city is going to want. And so, sometimes it puts me in a situation where I have to move forward, and I make my best guess, but it has burned me in the past. And so, I just have a little bit of, you know, just the regime change, sometimes you change the rules with it. If there's a way, I don't know how to word that in here, other than that is something that has happened. So, if there's a way to, in your guys' codes, or if that is in your facility standards manual, that gives me the standards of what to expect, then that would also, that would help me to know, if I don't have an agreement with parks, I can then go to your standards manual, put in, and knowing that I should get that type of a agreement made, even if I don't have an actual physical agreement. Does that make sense? So, that, that's just a point of clarity, making sure that we have something like that in, I don't even know what to say other than that.
Commissioner Thurston, members of the commission, as we move forward with that manual, we will include, sorry, Catherine Harrison Rogers for the record, Parks and Rec. We will, we will in, include you in on those conversations as we develop those, of course, that'll be a, a working document. We have a lot of the materials and just essentially have to assemble it all, but something that will be done in the next several months as we move forward with, with this as well.
Okay, thanks. I'm gonna move on to the next question just for you. Trails 1A, at the end, the wording says, and exercise stations are installed. Is, is the wording in here, where it says, extensions of the public trail and network shall be included in the calculation of the amount of dedicated parkland when the trail and amenities include streets and landscaping, street furnishings, and exercise stations are installed? Does that mean I have to put it, or anyone else has to put exercise stations?
Mr. Thurston, members of the commission, again, Catherine Harrison Rogers for the record. We can look at that, I think, and is probably the, the wrong word to use there, it should be and/or, as or is described by the, the manual, but that's something that we can look at. I agree that may be a problematic statement.
I just, I just know staff is gonna look at that and say, where's your, where's your workout equipment? It says and.
Understood. I think improvements perhaps, and we can, we can look at how that can be clarified a little bit.
Okay, now, I'm gonna jump over to alternates to parkland dedication. I, now, this is the land, so, if I understand this, if I give, if I give up land, I then still have to give a fee on top of that. Is that correct in the current way it is written?
Could you repeat the question, please? Again, Catherine Harrison Rogers with staff, as I was writing down, all I heard was I. If you could repeat it, please.
So, in, in basically the subject of I, right? Alternates to parkland dedication.
Yes.
And maybe that's not just the only spot, but also in J, where we can either dedicate land only, I, it looks like there's a couple of different options, but if I'm, for clarification, we would have to give up land and then also have to give up a park fee? Is that correct?
So, in, again, Commissioner Thurston, members of, of the commission, this is Catherine Harrison Rogers for the record. In this particular section, this is when there are instances whereby perhaps it doesn't make, there, there is not three acres to dedicate, correct? And so, you would be doing a fee in lieu in this situation, or perhaps you're adjacent to an existing park, and it makes sense to then dedicate land or improve portions of an existing park. And so, these are providing alternatives to dedicate parkland, build. So, if no situations where it just doesn't make sense, the development's not quite large enough, based on a number of circumstances such as adjacency to another park, et cetera, et cetera, these are some alternatives that one could employ. Did I answer your question?
Yes. Now, on, a fee in lieu, I, I feel that because your, your minimum is gonna be three acres, I believe you're gonna have more people using a fee in lieu, which is gonna be an opposite effect of what we're wanting. The fee in lieu, so, you're, in order to give up three acres, you're gonna have to have a larger tract. a larger tract of land for that, that calculation to work out. And if you're not going to, if you, I'm going to say if you have something less than 40 acres, you're most likely going to just pay a fee in lieu. And because of that, I think we'll just have more developers basically just say, "Here's my fee, I'm done. I don't have to worry about putting a park in. I don't have to really worry about putting a trail in. I don't have to, because I don't have to do it anymore." And so if I have a 10-acre tract, that I can put a one-acre park, or a half-acre park, and then I can put a trail contiguous to another one, it gives a lot more flexibility, and I think we'll have more parks built in the city of Las Cruces that way that we currently have it, whereas the three-acre minimum, once again, I do, I do see some developers that I have chatted with will probably pay a fee instead. Just, that's more of a, a personal opinion, I should say, but I do think that's what would happen with that. I don't have really anything else for parks.
Mr. Chair, if I might sort of elaborate on something that Commissioner Thurston did say.
Go ahead.
Catherine, yes, Catherine Harrison Rogers again for the record. We shared your concerns in terms of, of forcing people into a fee in lieu situation, but during our discussions internally, one of the ideas that did come to mind is that this doesn't preclude the city from perhaps working with the developer to then actually reimburse or purchase land, so that there can be a partnership, so that three acres or something like that could be developed as part of the process. So it would be more of a partnership, perhaps in those situations, rather than just a straight fee in lieu if at all possible.
As a, as a planning and zoning board, as the development community that I'm from, we support basically almost everything in this, from, we've gone through the whole process with it. The, the parks is the only one right now that we basically have a hang-up with in theory of, of how things are going to kind of work out. We're, we're still a little bit in the dark. We don't, we don't have the warm fuzzies yet. And so as a planning and zoning commission, I, in order for it to basically go to city council and then get the recommendation from that home building side and the developer community, I, I do think it would be great for, for us to recommend that those two entities, that the parks and the development community can get together and have a solution before going to city of Las Cruces. I would love to just see this, be able to just go into the, the city councillors and not have to have this parks discussion there. It would be great for us as basically the development community to come in and say, "Hey, we support it, let's go, and we don't have really any issues to it." Because that, that is really the only area that we still have concerns on.
So maybe in an effort to, to continue the conversation this evening, perhaps when we see this again in November, staff in your presentation can maybe present some examples of where this approach has worked. I think maybe might be helpful. I'm not saying that it will change your mind, but at least maybe it will give you some context in that the concerns that are being raised, I think, are completely valid, because the whole idea, I think, we're all trying to achieve here is we need more housing, and we don't want to give ourselves more rope over here just to take it away over here. So I think maybe that might help further the discussion, if staff could maybe plan on having some information in November. So.
I have a couple more questions.
I, Stephen Bam, Parks and Recreation Director. I'd make one comment. I think a little bit that a lot of these developments that are going to be coming in are, that you're typically deal with, you're concerned that you need to be able to get three acres out of that. What you've got to recognize is, is it's per thousand people. And so there's a significant number of houses and units, and I believe it's like 667 or something, we had a calculation on, and I can provide that to you later, but that is a significant number. And so there's going to be working together with subdivisions and plots or next to it, or like was mentioned, that we may, we may need to buy a portion of land, or work out a development agreement, because the requirement for your development is only big enough for one and a half acres. If we're going to get to the three-acre minimum, we're going to have to come to the table with a solution, so.
Commissioner, I, I don't, I don't think I have in any issue, nor, nor some of the developers that I have with the three acre per thousand. I don't think we have an issue with the actual calculation of it. It's more a application of it is, is, I think I've given the example of like a 10-acre tract of land, right? Now if I do my 10-acre tract of land, and I get a high density of this 16, and maybe I get 160 units, well, I still can't give up three acres in a 10-acre tract and, and get what you need. It just doesn't, it doesn't work that way, and so you'll end up paying a fee in lieu. But so, on, but if you allow the flexibility of that three acre to, to reduce the size, it will allow us to put those parks in, in other areas. Because if not, we, we are going to have to do what you said there is, you know, if I have a 10-acre, well, maybe I'm going to carve off half an acre here, and then cross my fingers that the adjoining neighbor with a development wants to attach his new park to my park, right? So that we can get even bigger. So it's, it's just, it's tough. That's all I'm going to say on that. It is tough.
Last questions that I have, technical manuals that have been mentioned, are they provided after adoption, or are they part of it prior to adoption?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Murray, Sarah Gonzalez, Economic Development, they will be provided at the same time, so they will be adopted in accordance with each other. So if realizes to be adopted, then the technical, technical manuals will be adopted as well.
Okay. Do we need to review those as part of this, or provide comments on it, or are they kind of just typical?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Murray, normally when you see technical manuals, they are usually reviewed by staff. We have had supplementary developers look at them to see if they understand or can actually implement some of that. It will be out for public review. It will not have to have PNZ's recommendation for adoption, though.
Okay, perfect. And then on this equation that we have on the screen here, how do you calculate people per unit? Like, I'm just thinking you could have a retired couple, it's only two people, or you could have a family of multiple with kids.
Commissioner Murray, members of the commission, again Catherine Harrison Rogers for staff. Periodically, every five years, we actually do what's called land use assumptions. And there's sort of two parts to this. One is people per unit, if you're talking about a single-family home versus a multifamily. And there are some analyses that are done. We typically hire a firm that helps us create these land use assumptions that says, okay, based on current census trends and a number of other things, we're estimating there's two points some odd people per single-family unit, but there are only 1.6 people or 1.9 people per multifamily unit. So that's one piece of the puzzle, and that's a, that's something that's updated periodically, so that, that we can match kind of our growth trends and how things are actually functioning. The other piece of the puzzle is actually when you're doing a master plan, or you're doing a development plan, you generally are, are provided information from a developer that says X amount of acres is going to be multifamily, X amount of acres is going to be single-family, and you can do some, some, some quick estimates in terms of how many units, and then how many people, based on the underlying zoning or what's being proposed on the master plan.
Okay, perfect. I have just last two quick ones. Last spelling one, 381, 5A. Just like to get all these in, otherwise I'll forget. At the very end of the sentence, it says maximum of eight feet and eight. I'm assuming that is not correct. And then my very, very last one, I don't need a printed copy, but when we come to meeting next November, whatever, is there a way that we could get redlined, or what items have changed throughout the pages, just so that we can be sure that we're reviewing or recommending our comments on tonight's meeting?
Mr. Chair and Commission, yes, we will be providing any of the updates that we would make prior to the code revision you have in your hands, so that was dated October 2nd. There has been a modification from the October 15th, we already have those documented. And then if we do any other modifications from anything we've taken back from the work session tonight and put those into code, then we'll provide those. So they will all be referenced back into your code as those changes are being modified.
I've got a few other comments that are not related to parks, but before I move off of parks, going back to the in lieu fee, is it my understanding that it's one or the other? So like, if you didn't have the minimum required, you either pay into the in lieu fee, or is there an option for like a combo? Like, I could, I could give you one acre, and then I'll pay in? Is that option available, as it's written?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I, I don't think there's anything in the code that precludes something like that from happening. There's a lot of deference given to the, the parks director to make some judgment calls if need be, but we can inspect that a little bit more closely to make sure that people could have some variability, if you will.
Okay. I don't know if that's something that the development committee would be open to, but it seems like that might kind of thread the needle there.
It, it might help some, but the, the one question that when you ask, the fee in lieu, in, if I understand this from what I read, which mine might not, but the fee in lieu is going to incorporate the amount of units, times that by currently, would be times by 2,600, and additionally, whatever land use that I would have had, I have to pay that fee too. Am I understanding that correctly? So there's kind of two, there's two calculations on the financial model of what I have to pay you for the fee. I'm going to have to pay you for a land, so you could purchase it somewhere else, and I'm going to have to pay the per-unit cost to have a fee in lieu. Am I understanding that correctly?
Mr. Thurston, Steve Bam, Parks and Recreation Director. You threw out the number 2,600, which is the current impact fee. The impact fee is a different side. The fee in lieu is related to the park dedication requirement, which is related to just the neighborhood park function. It is not related to the impact fee that would go forward for community parks, recreation centers, trails, and aquatic facilities.
Just to clarify again, Catherine Harrison Rogers for the record, again, the, the fee in lieu is going to be based on cost of land plus cost of improvements of that land.
Okay, so right here where it says a fee set by the city council based on the market value of the required acreage.
And that's something that we are looking into having, is done as part of the yearly fee schedule that's adopted, but it'll be based on most current pricing.
It also depends on where you buy that land. So if I, if I go and I buy, if I, if city council comes out and says, "Hey, we want you to buy land for us to put a dog park," and writing on Rin Canada and Highway 70, that land is going to be extremely expensive, because it's commercial land, but yet it was created into a dog park. Or if you go and you buy land elsewhere, that's cheaper, you know, and that could be in a neighborhood, so there, there's a little bit of gray area there also as to how are we going to get that fee assessed? So the fee in lieu, once again, can just be a arbitrary number, depending on who is on city council at the time, and what they feel is the best number for us to pay. Just throwing that out there.
Stephen Bam, Parks and Recreation Director. Remember, the fee in lieu is neighborhood parks, it's going to be in the subdivisions, which is residential land. There may be times of, dog park is a specialty park, that would be responsibility of the city, and would be unrelated to the fee in lieu, that would be achieved through the impact fee. So the fee in lieu will be figured based on the development costs for a neighborhood park in the subdivisions, in the residential area.
What, what you said there, I don't actually read it in here. I don't, it doesn't, it doesn't read neighborhood parks. Unless I'm, I'm not understanding it correctly, but it's not saying it has to be. Fee in lieu is not going to be calculated that way, because then it goes on to park fund establishment, a separate fund, deposit at the highest rate, interest, interest rate by law, park fund shall be and is hereby created, the money paid into the fund shall be held, basically for the purpose of purchasing or improving public park and recreational land within the city. So if, if what you're saying is for, fee in lieu is for residential parks, then I would like you to actually add it in there as that's the residential park.
Sir, I'm Steve Bam, Parks and Recreation Director. We'll go back and look at that language, but we're talking about the park dedication vehicle, and, and that is strictly neighborhood parks. And so go there and see if there's something we can do to create clarity, but it, the intent is, is it's neighborhood parks for fee in lieu. Impact fee is everything else.
So I agree with you right now, but when we get a new parks director, then they have a different, they might not agree with us now.
Yeah, we'll look at the language and note your concern, and see how we can make sure it's clear.
Thanks.
All right, I want to jump back to the beginning of section five. This is section 5-2 on page 301, this is roads, rides away, and parking. The purpose, nice lovely paragraph there, but in the middle of it, it says, "In all transportation decisions, safety should be prioritized to ensure the well-being and protection of every individual traveling within the city." I know my differences between should and shall would strongly encourage that should become a shall. For example, I rode my bike here tonight, and I, it wasn't my, my desire that I arrive here safely. I really wanted to arrive here safely, and I think everybody in the city should be afforded that opportunity. And I think if we're really serious about solving some of our road safety challenges, we will absolutely make that a priority.
What, what number was that one again?
Sorry, this was on page 301, section 5-2A, it's in the middle of that paragraph. I have some concern on page 302, section C, down number eight, for intersection design, this is around the, "No fire apparatus shall encroach into oncoming traffic." They already do that. Emergency vehicles do what they need to do to get through intersections, to get through traffic. Everybody works out in the end, it's not that big of a deal. I'm concerned that this requirement is going to ensure that every intersection that we ever build in the city will be overbuilt for one purpose, and disregard the safety of other road users. The vast majority, all right, I don't know the statistics, but I'm pretty sure that the response rate to car crashes in the city far exceeds putting out fires. And here we have an opportunity to reduce the severity and the frequency in which those crashes happen. I think we shouldn't be undermining it, just so that we can get our fire truck there. I think we shouldn't be undermining it just so that we can get our fire truck there faster. This one section, I do have a lot of concerns with. I don't want to really dive too far into the weeds since we are at almost 10 o'clock. I think generally speaking, I have, just overall, I just don't really feel like the safety part is making its way into the proposed cross-sections. I do appreciate that we removed the, are we allowed for road reconstruction? So redoing roads that already exist, having that be outside of the cross-section standards because it does give us the flexibility that we're going to need to be able to solve these problems. So I agree with that. I just, I have a lot of problems with the way that we've got them identified for new roads specifically. We've got to get travel lanes to 11 feet. It's in the active transportation plan. You look at all of the literature out there, 11 feet needs to be our target or smaller, particularly on local streets. It's a natural traffic calming measure. It's easy to do. Our emergency vehicles can still get through. We need to get there. We should not be encouraging the use of sharrows, which are the bike lane markings in the middle of the travel lane. They provide no safety to any cyclist. The data supports that. In fact, the, what is considered sort of the brainchild of that particular infrastructure has come out and said that it doesn't work. It doesn't provide any value to anybody, doesn't improve safety. Now, I do believe that it serves a purpose when other traffic calming measures are also implemented. So if you look at bicycle boulevards, for example, those obviously have the shero markings, but they're in conjunction with all those other traffic calming measures that make it safe for cyclists. So I agree with them in that context. All the other contexts, that should not even be something that we're considering. We should be absolutely setting the standard that our bike lanes are physically protected by something other than paint. So a painted buffer is not protection, particularly on our collector and arterial roads. Would like to see that the standard be that there's some sort of physical barrier. If flex posts is the happy compromise with Public Works, willing to consider it. But just having a paint that looks like for all intents and purposes, another bike lane is not going to stop the lifted pickup truck from running you over. I'm also not really sure I understand the transit lane concept. I mean, I understand the concept, but in Las Cruces, I just don't know how practical that is. I think the biggest thing that comes to mind is how are we going to enforce it? If you look at all the other cities that have attempted these sort of transit only lanes, drivers still use them. They still double park in them. So unless there's like a physical separation, I just don't know how it's actually going to function. I've lost my place on the cross-sections here, sorry. And then along, along those lines, so is the idea that every new arterial, principal arterial road would have bus lane, I guess, is that regardless of whether or not there's even a bus route? So that's just the other general remark. I'm not asking necessarily for any, any answers at this moment. But that would just be something, I just, I just don't see how this would actually play out here in Las Cruces at this stage. I'm also not a fan of buses and bikes missing, mixing, particularly if there's no physical separation. Because a driver is just going to see an open lane and they're going to take it regardless of whether or not there's a cyclist sitting there. And then also just the passing of buses and transit vehicles. I mean, if you don't have a curb and gutter, then yeah, they can, you know, the bus can go wide and get around. But if they do 13 feet, you're going to introduce conflicts there that I think are kind of unnecessary. The boulevard cross-section, currently no bike facilities are, appear to be part of that. That needs to get fixed. Same with the avenues, there needs to be bike facilities. The one big thing that's missing on streets from my opinion is we don't have any recommended intersection designs. The only thing that we talk about when it comes to intersections is clear sightlines. That's from one point of view, a driver. A lot of conflict happens between cyclists and pedestrians at intersections. Some of the basics, you know, the curb extensions, the directional curb cuts that actually sends you in the direction you ought to be going as opposed to kind of diagonally out into traffic. Those should be standard in every intersection that we design. I'd like to see that incorporated. Since we have sightlines, why not have these other elements around safety, particularly from non-automotive users? Marked crosswalks always, I mean, the amount of crosswalks in the city is shockingly low. And I know there's this concept of an implied crosswalk, which makes absolutely no sense. Impplied to who? Certainly not drivers. We need to have marked crosswalks. That's the standard, that should be the standard.
Can I, can I ask a question while you're going through those? So what is this, what is the speed limit of like a boulevard? What would the recommended speed limit of a boulevard be? And while you're looking for that, let me give you the reason why is because when, when you are biking, and, and I bike with my kids to school quite often. But as long as I'm going through a neighborhood, I feel safe with my kids. And I even allow them to ride their bike to school. And it's only about a mile and a half from where we live to go. So, but on days like, if I need to go anywhere else, I rode from my house, which is somewhere, it's, it's off of Rin Canada, and I rode all the way over to the Veterans Park. And it's an electric bike, so I'm not going to say I'm, I'm the bicyclist, right? Because it's electric. But I throw my kids on the back and we said, hey, we're going to go today. There was a little party we were going to go to. Well, when the speed limit is 35, 45 miles an hour, and all of a sudden you don't have a place to bike, I had my daughter on the back and I just kept telling her, hey, uh, look behind us, tell me, tell me. So I'm sitting there pedaling as fast as I can and it's electric bike, so we could at least go 20 miles an hour. And then I would get over to the side when she would say, hey dad, move over. And then we'd kind of go back again because there was no pathway to do it. But the reason I, the reason I say that is because on a boulevard, if the speed limit is still too high, if it's 45 miles an hour, or if it's, I think if it's 25 or under, you might not necessarily need a bike lane. Like in a, like an avenue, you might not necessarily need a bike lane. And on, there's a YouTube video, a YouTube guy called Not Just Bikes. He does a lot of stuff with, with biking, kind of like that you're explaining right now. And he shows when you, when you can share the road with a bike, or share the road with a car and a bike, and when you can't. And I thought that was very, very useful for me in planning and doing developments and things like that. But I also think it does have to do with speed limit. So if a boulevard is fairly slow, it's not too bad. But engineering wise, when we start doing engineering, engineers love space. I mean, if they can have more space because more space means more safe. But in reality, more space means higher speeds and it's actually not safer. And so a lot of the times, smaller, tighter, actually will, the visual speed bumps or visual speed, you know, calming measures are better. And so I, I agree with you guys around this one is that there's, everything is wide, everything is big. And there's two factors on that, that's negative. One, it's great for traffic. I mean, if that's, if that's the city that we're going to continually be, which we are, we're a car dominant city. But it also causes a lot of money in maintenance of a city. The more asphalt you have, the more maintenance you're going to have. And that's why you see in our budgets that residential housing really is not, doesn't probably make enough tax dollars to pay for all of the upkeep of that, of that subdivision for long. That's why we always try to push it more to urban and other things like that, that we can actually have the tax dollar to provide for it. So, sorry, I'm going to let you keep going here, but I, I do think the speed limit would determine on, if that's okay? Do you have that speed limit on the boulevard now?
We don't have assigned speed limits in the code. That wouldn't be regulated by the code. But one, one thing I did want to mention, it doesn't entirely address the comment, but maybe partially. The 12-foot, they're labeled multi-use path slash sidewalks. The ones that are 10 and 12 feet, those are intended to be a shared pedestrian and bicycle use. So if it was a situation like kids riding to school by themselves, for example, they would be able to ride on the multi-purpose, excuse me, multi-use path. The bike lanes are of course intended for more experienced riders and things like that. So they serve a different purpose, but they, those are available in the boulevard cross-section.
Yeah, thank you. I missed that, so I appreciate that clarification. And yeah, I think I'd echo the, the speed limit thing though. I think it's important to remember that it's, it's the design speed, not just the speed limit. I mean, you could put a sign up on I-10 that says 25 miles an hour and no one's going to follow that speed limit. So it's very much the design speed that I think we need to be factoring into these cross-sections. You know, do we need 22 feet on a local road with parking on both sides? Because most likely there won't be parking on both sides. So you've got just a natural racetrack going through neighborhoods. Just because you classify it as such, doesn't mean that that's what's going to end up happening. Wanted to move on to traffic impact analysis. Let me get back to where that was. So this is on page 323. I know, I know in the presentation, it was talked about, I think it was talked about, multimodal traffic impact analyses. But in, in the draft that I have, that does not appear to be very explicit. So I don't know if, I know at one point it was, maybe I missed it. Not sure if anybody else has seen that.
The multimodal aspect is included in the, in the technical manual, which I understand you don't have right now to look at that, but that is included. I'm not sure if there's anyone from Public Works left remaining, remaining to speak to that, but it is included in the tech manual.
Okay. Yeah, this is one example where it would be really great to see that technical manual. I guess, and maybe this isn't the technical manual now, I don't know. But in figure 52 dash 13, page 323, you know, we have peak hour trips. I think we need to specify that the TIA should also include non-motorized trip generation, particularly in places in our urban core where the whole point is to, we're reducing our automobile use. I have never seen a traffic impact analysis recommend shrinking a road. It doesn't happen. The whole point of them is to increase the road. That's historically how they've been. So we need to find and encourage developers when they are doing this to have the appropriate analyses that are going to achieve the end results that we're, that we're seeking. I think there also needs to be an emphasis on local trip count data. The, the code, the current language references the ITE trip generation manual. But I think we need to also encourage local trip count data and other policies that the city has as these analyses are being developed. Because again, it's not, we're just doing the TIA because we want traffic to flow faster. The TIA is one piece of a larger policy objective that we're trying to meet. If the goal is to have more walkable pedestrian-friendly communities, we don't want to then turn around and say, but our TIA said we need a five-lane highway. Well, okay, then what's the point? We're not a pedestrian-oriented development at that point. Going on to, this is, well, page 324.
Are you still on TIA's?
Yes.
Okay, good.
I'll, I'll let you know when I'm done with the thoughts. I only have a couple more. Under special circumstances, when the Public Works Director may require a TIA, I want it, I suggest that we add another item, which would, and I don't have the language. I could send some language that I have as an example. But basically having the ability, if there's concerns with that development and trip generation as it relates to non, the safety of non-motorized users, I think that should also be a trigger point that could trigger a TIA to say, hey, we're adding, just as an example, the, the project is going to require a slip lane. Well, I would argue that that slip lane is going to severely undercut safety of pedestrians who might be crossing at that intersection. So I would just recommend adding something along those lines of when a TIA may be triggered, when it's not already required. I think I have one more other comment on TIA's, give me one second.
While you're looking that up, can I, can I go on TIA's? All right, so on, on C and D on page 324, which would be what, five dash two G3C? On the following, on the previous page, it also says, the following provides specific situations where a TIA shall be required. On C, it says building permit. So is that meaning that every time I pull a building permit anywhere, I'm going to have to put a TIA? And then driveway permits, development plans? I think it's, I think it's requiring us to put a TIA in way too many spots in that specific one. I just, I also had a couple of people call me and also say, hey, can we please bring that one up? Because I think it's asking for TIA's way too often. And TIA's are fairly expensive. So when you, when you do have to go out there and you, if it's something simple, a building permit, that we don't need a TIA, but this is requiring that we have it on basically all of them. So I just wanted a clarification on, on that one.
Just to be sure I'm understanding your, your comment. So on G3C, building permit, driveway permit or development plan, it's saying a TIA is required for any building permit, et cetera, if the project meets the requirements of the table on the previous page. So it, it wouldn't be for any building permit. It would only be if it met the
It only meets that.
Trip generation, yes, not necessarily for any building permit.
Okay. And then the other one on D, it, it gives the, basically the Public Works Director any opportunity whenever they basically want to require a TIA. And don't know if that's a, a good thing or a bad thing either. That was something that was just brought up to. What it'll end up doing is we just might have to have a TIA on every single project that we do if, if it's left up to them. That's all I got on TIA's, back to you.
I'm, I'm done with TIA's. Move on.
I'm sorry, can I add one last thing to this?
Please.
Okay. I'm just, and in kind of regards to TIA, what I'm looking at is the traffic calming device. And it refers to, I believe on 311, and, um, it refers to, I believe, on three-eleven, let's see... Up at, or, excuse me, up at the top of three-twelve, about the Traffic Calming Device. And it says, "It talks about the new developments shall implement traffic calming measures as required in the Traffic Calming section of the technical manual, to which we have, uh, are aware that we are not able to see the technical manual just yet. However, the thing that I was curious about there is just like, kind of the post-review of traffic calming stuff. I know, you know, for instance, in, in our planning and zoning meetings, it often seems to come up about places of congested traffic, ingress, egress, as we get to whatever, uh, situation we may be handling that night. You know, other parts of that area that have, you know, issues with traffic come up. I don't entirely know where, you know, maybe a TIA in this situation could potentially be initiated or how some of that feedback could be handled. You know, I guess, uh, in the post-end versus instead of, I guess we're not necessarily able to do so much beforehand, especially, you know, a code, you know, change like this. So I, I don't know where we are addressing that, and if that traffic calming, you know, potential adjustments that we need to be making in the future, how that even gets put in there.
There is a provision in the, um, in the technical manual about traffic calming and, um, some, some, um, situations where, based on the, um, the speeds that are monitored, how much over the, the posted speed limit cars are traveling, what traffic calming measures are appropriate to implement, whether they're temporary or permanent traffic calming measures. But, um, those parameters are established in the technical manual for, for retroactively installing traffic calming.
And is that subjective to like, the traffic cau- uh, the traffic, uh, the TIA director? Or how, how exactly, um, I guess, in whose objective, subjectivity is that in relation to, um, in terms of, I know you had mentioned the points of, you know, speed thresholds in the neighborhood that are being crossed? Like, what is going to, uh, initiate some examination where we get hard data on this neighborhood that people are complaining about, for instance, like McClure or some of these other streets? We've, oh, countless streets here in town that people have, you know, mentioned.
I believe there is a process outlined where if a, if a neighborhood wanted to request a traffic calming measure be installed, how they could request it. Um, and then I think that also relates to the speed limit thresholds that are established for what's the appropriate calming to include. Um, but all of that would be, I believe, overseen by the Public Works Director.
Okay, and that would be referred to in the technical manual or the process that we would, you know, tell somebody that they need to go do, um, if they want to complain about that in some separate thing? Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
On page three-twelve that you were just at, uh, Traffic Calming, I have a note here for alleys. Um, and it is, "Be where the average width along a block face averages forty feet or less, the lot shall be rear-loaded with alley access." Except, exceptions is townhome lots. Townhouse lots may be narrower than forty feet and front-loaded. So if I understand this right, if we do a single-family development and I go a forty-foot-wide lot, or if I go smaller than that, I have to put an alley?
Yes, I believe that's how it currently reads, unless it's a townhome.
Does, does that inhibit some of our design abilities to not have attached products? So if I, if I can find a way to get a thirty-five-foot lot, but I still have a, you know, that would probably end up coming down to a twenty-five-foot wide home, it would have to come from an alley. Is that what I'm understanding?
Yeah, I, from my perspective, I think, and staff, correct me if I'm wrong, but the, uh, the objective in that situation is that the frontage of your house is not your garage, that you have a front door, uh, you know, some, so I think that's, at least that's how I read it, that, um, you would want something other than just people's garages.
Unless you do a townhouse.
Unless you do a townhouse.
Correct. So there would be some amount of, of front yard, actually, in the front yard. It's not all entirely driveway. Um, another consideration, um, that could be at play is if there's on-street parking, so making sure that there's enough room for a car to park, um, between where driveways are, whenever it gets into the narrower lots.
Okay, but that's only under forty feet?
Correct.
All right.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner, I would also say, you know, this is just saying if you were to put alleys into your development. These would be your standards. This isn't saying you have to put an alley into your development. If you put them in, this is what we want to see for those alleys. That way, we can actually circulate traffic properly. So this is not saying you have to put them in. This is just saying they are permitted in any new development. So if you choose to use them, this would be your standards.
Okay, so-
They're not saying they're required.
Are you sure about that?
Yes, it just says alleys are permitted in all new development. It doesn't say they are required in every development.
Thank you.
So I think we're good.
I agree with you now. Thanks.
Um, okay, I wanted to move on to... I think this is, so I think we're in a new section, street lighting. This is on page three twenty-six, three twenty-seven. On three twenty-seven, under four, so this would be I-four. Um, this is basically the required placement of, uh, street lighting. Uh, I would like to, or suggest that we add, um, to this list, uh, any location of pedestrian or cyclist crossings slash trail crossings. Um, in those instances where you have maybe a mid-block situation, to require some sort of lighting there. Um, if it's at an intersection, you're obviously covered, 'cause it's an intersection, but we do have situations, and probably will have more of them. Just wanna make sure that that's in, captured. Um, and then going to the next, page three twenty-eight, um, this is, uh, I guess the section under "Street Lighting Requests," that starts on page three twenty-seven. But under, so this would be six, uh, E, uh, five, I think, is correct? Um, it's, "Street lighting may be installed along local streets when traffic volumes, nighttime crashes, nighttime pedestrian use, and/or roadway hazards show a need for improved lighting." Um, I have a little bit of heartburn with the fact that we're gonna study where, how many pedestrians might be using a place deemed not safe and therefore they may avoid. So if we're out there saying, "Well, no one crosses the street here, therefore, we don't need a street light." I mean, you don't build a bridge where you see people swimming across the river. Um, so it just seems like that particular data point probably should not be the basis for which you would install lighting. Um, I think, uh, just a general comment, there's a lot of mention of the, of the MUTCD. I think we should be referring to NACTO instead. Um, there's a lot of concerns that MUTCD doesn't really address safety concerns in the way that it ought to, and NACTO, um, is a better resource. And then, so I'm just kind of moving forward here. So, moving on to page three thirty-two, um, this is the, the timing for sidewalk construction. Um, and I appreciate the fact that we have a mechanism to fill in sidewalk gaps, particularly in our larger subdivisions, um, with that, that time, um, on, uh, window. I think three years is too long. Perhaps something halfway in between seems more reasonable. I think it's, you know, we build the road from day one, why do I gotta wait three years to get a sidewalk? Um, I think we can kind of compress that from, uh, three years to eighteen months. And this is under, on three thirty-two, six, A-two.
Three, three thirty-two, where was that one at? I'm sorry. For your, how, where, where are you at on that one?
Uh, sorry, uh, three thirty-two, number six, A-two.
I guess my point on that is, just going to Sonoma, example, subdivisions built in two thousand and five, there are lots that are undeveloped, and you reach out to the owners and they say they're not selling, and sometimes you can't find them. So I think, yes, we wanna have complete sidewalks, but at the point in time that they, I don't know, can you compel them or impose a fine on them to build a sidewalk and then have to potentially tear it up once they decide to build on that parcel? I think that comes to a roadblock, maybe, potentially.
Yeah, I mean, we heard that concern in the Technical Advisory Committee meeting. Um, I, the way I look at it is, if you damaged the asphalt on the road, you've gotta repair it. So, I mean, it's kind of the same thing. I mean, sure, there's a risk you damage your sidewalk, but I don't, I don't think we should have gaps in our network just because it might get dinged that the homeowner's responsible for also repairing, just like they would anything else in the public right-of-way.
I wouldn't say dinged, but more that you're gonna have a twenty-five-foot portion where you're gonna have to put the driveway, assuming that there's a driveway with a garage and whatnot. So they would basically pay to install for a sidewalk, then pay to tear it up to then put it back, if that makes sense.
I, I understand what you're saying. My preference is to have the sidewalk.
There's... In construction, they tear up everything. So if I have a sidewalk in front before I start to build a house, that sidewalk is gonna become damaged. And in order for me to put a sidewalk in, I have to get the city to come out and inspect my forms to make sure that I'm in the right thickness, right? But then, right where those forms, where, where that concrete is right now, I still have to come back in and dig and get my sewer connection that's right there. I have to dig to get my wa- uh, the water's already there. But there's a couple other utility that we have, well, mainly just the sewer. But we will end up tearing up that, that sidewalk. Um, three years, I think, is adequate, because if, if we go in, we had two-hundred-and-twenty-one lots, um, and it took us almost three years. So that was about a forty-acre parcel. Um, and when you see some of the bigger builders out there, they are, they are buying up, you know, a, a two-hundred-lot subdivision at one time. Now, it might take them the three years to get through it. So if you're gonna, if, if you change that to a year and a half, and I'm building and I'm halfway through it, and now this kicks in, and I, because of the code, I have to come out here and put all of it in, I like the idea of having the connectivity, but s- when, when you get volume builders, they try to build them in streets at a time, right? So they try to build out that street instead of, 'cause you don't want the, you don't want your homeowner being right next to the construction. So you try to say, "Okay, if I got fifteen of these houses, I'm gonna try to build them all out, get all the construction done, and then go to the next street." But if the market slows and other things like that, there's gonna be no one in that subdivision to use that street or that sidewalk anyways. So I like the, I like the three-year, it does give you, unless you could put a provision in here, you know, but then it, it becomes a little bit, a little bit harder to follow. I, I like the three-years solely for, for that, 'cause if it does, it, it's more the onesie-twosie guy that you're seeing, you know, instead of, instead of production builder that's in there to do something, they're normally trying to get in and trying to get out and produce a, a, a volume of houses, but it's the guy that buys the one lot. And then they say, "Hold on a sec, because I had enough cash to buy this lot, now you gotta give me five more years." Now, in that instance, I could see, okay, would, everyone else around him has built it up. So then the three-years kicks in, and you're saying, "Hey, I don't know if you're gonna take another five years to save up enough money to do the rest, so maybe you should have to kick it in." So I don't, I, I would caution us to make it shorter than three years.
So I guess my question for city staff is, if that is what we're proposing here, are you then gonna go out and find all those lots, saying Sonoma, Caia Beliza, for example, where there's like two vacant homes that don't have the continuous sidewalk? Are you going to send codes out there, identify these properties, then try to reach out to the owners to then build the sidewalks, so that we have complete neighborhoods with sidewalks? Is that kind of what this is then proposing to get there, is my question?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Murray, that would be correct. The idea is, um, the city, I wanna say it was four or five years ago, we did basically the sidewalk gaps and identified all of these areas that were built in two thousand and six, two thousand and seven, that left all these gaps. And so in, in order for us to no longer have those gaps with developments that are coming in, it now gives us the right to say that these have to be built out. And so, yes, codes would go out, notify them, give them a timeframe in which they would need to come into compliance with the current code as it's adopted.
Okay, so say we have a development in two thousand and six, and they have just sat on that land forever. Would you give them, like, three years from the time that this is adopted to then comply? Or since they've been sitting on it for ten-plus years, they then have to comply immediately?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Murray, we would have to accept the three years as to when it's adopted, because this would be the first time that they would be notified this is something going into code, and so it's from the adoption date.
And it's not to say if they don't have the funds or the means to build the house at the time that they need to do the sidewalks, they can plan in advance to try to get the utilities under the sidewalks and the rough location of the driveway, so that once they build the house, they don't have to demolish it and tear up the sidewalk. In theory, is that possible? Um, and if that is possible, would they need to have further, like, building permits or construction things pulled from the city in order to do that, um, portion?
Commissioner Murray, um, any improvements done to a property would require any of the building permits that are necessary, because we definitely don't want infrastructure going in that hasn't been inspected in some form, and then putting it as a safety hazard for the pedestrians who may be using it, or for the site itself. So if there's any utility connections, um, if there's any capouts, we'll make sure that those would be inspected to show that they're capped out until the development actually takes place. Sidewalks would be installed, meeting city standards, so that way they're, at some point, if they do have to be removed, um, then they're removed, but if they are actually putting their utility infrastructure in, we already have them in place and they meet code.
All right, um, moving along. Um, so actually, in the next section, "In Off-Street Parking", uh, come right out of the gate again, saying, "All new developments shall provide off-street parking," but that's not true. So I think we can be a little bit more, um, upfront about where that is required or is not. I have just a general concern, this is on page three thirty-five, this is also off-street parking. Um, but, oh, gosh, this is... Well, page three thirty-five, under "Off-Street Parking", um, there is, uh, "The ability to, up to forty percent of required parking spaces may be provided on property separate from the property served." I'm not sure if that's in relation to like, a, um, parking, shared parking agreement. Um, but the way I initially read it, um, I interpreted that as like, you could go buy the neighboring parcel and build your parking lot, uh, or build additional parking on an adjacent lot. Um, I, and I don't know if that's the right interpretation, but I would say if it is, I'm not in favor of that. I don't know, staff, if that is how you're interpreting it, but, um...
Yes, that is the correct interpretation. So the, the property owner, um, could own the adjacent property and have their parking in the adjacent property.
Okay. Um, yeah, I, I would strongly encourage that we don't have freestanding parking lots. Um, I think it, we have enough parking in the city, we don't need to build more of it. There was just a recent example downtown where a business built additional parking, and that's taking away, unfortunately, prime real estate for other services that could be developed. The, so I think this actually may address one of the comments that came out of public comments this evening, but, uh, further down on the page, under five bicycle parking standards, there's the minimum required, um, and it looks like it's only contained within our urban characters and our overlay. I'm not sure if that's accurate, but my only comment there would be, I think bike parking should be per the table that we have, should be required everywhere. Um, I don't think, it should just be restricted to our urban, our urban centers.
I
Yeah, go ahead.
I don't know if I agree with that, only because we're, we're still such a car dominant place. And some areas, well, I guess it's, it's kind of twofold. You need it so that people will use the bike. But then, on the other hand, if it's not safe to get to the area, you won't ever need it anyways. And so, in, in the growth of going for bikes, which I'm, I, I like going that way, um, it's hard, it's hard to implement the bike in our society today with the infrastructure that we have and the way that our city is built. And so it's easier for us to just be able to like, you know, have a s- clean slate and then put all of that in. You go to Amsterdam, you go to other places like that, that you're seeing, and they have a great pedestrian network, they have a great biking network, they have all of that stuff. But that's because they've had stuff in play for thirty years. So I, I think it's a good idea to put some of this in here so that in thirty years we'll get there, right? But, and also, we're gonna have to stop being such a car dominant society. Um, but to, i- if it's required in here and, and someone's putting, uh, we don't have parking or, or a pathway to get there safely, we're just causing more people to put more more cost on a, on a building or other things like that. But I, I don't know, I can go kind of both ways on that, though.
Adding to that point, too, I think you personally can only change your views or opinions or how you want to move forward, but you can't change those of others. One example that I had is that I was doing an open house at Heritage Farm, which is right at next NMSU. Individual comes in, says, I work at the university. I'm like, oh, my god, you can walk or bike to school or to your job every day. And she's like, nope, I'd rather just drive. Um, so I think that's also the other thing that you have to take into consideration, too, that some people just are resistant to traveling other ways than a car.
I, I do agree with it being on all urban, though. I, I think that's a great, because that's where, that's where most of it's probably gonna get used right now.
Yeah, I, I, I understand the points that you all raised. I guess to the point that you can't change everyone's behavior, I, I'm not naive to think that that's the case. But every place has a parking spot for a car. And if I choose to ride my bike, I'm out of luck. I don't think it's that expensive to install biking. If you look at the requirements, uh, it's almost, I'm just picking a random thing here, a retail store local, uh, if it is required to have parking, it's one space for four hundred square feet. And the bike parking is one bicycle spot for three thousand square feet, which I believe a retail store or local is capped at three thousand square feet, which means they only need one bicycle walk. I don't think that cost is really significant in that situation.
No, I agree with you there. I think the cost for installing the bike parking is not expensive. However, redoing the roadwork to be able to bike safely is not gonna be, it's gonna take thirty years to get to where we want.
Point taken, but there are people who ride their bikes whether it's safe or not. So I think giving them an opportunity to do that, it's people choose to drive their cars and they have a parking spot waiting for them. I think the same thing should be true for someone who chooses to bike. Uh, I, just trying to make progress here. One, this is just an overall comment on the formatting of this section in particular. For parking lots, we have all of these design standards, but then with landscaping, we punch you to a different section. I think if we can just combine everything for parking lots, if you're gonna build a parking lot, you just go this spot in the code, and you have everything there for you as opposed to then going for your landscaping requirements to a different section. I think it would just be an easier way to read the document. And then that would leave the landscaping requirements just for the non-parking lot stuff. I think it would just be simpler.
I have one quick question, uh, mostly for Sarah, going back to the sidewalk issue. Uh, not really concerned on new developments because they're building there actively, but more focused on, or the question's focused on those developments that have been, they're sitting on their lots for twenty-plus years. Say they are served a three-year notice to provide the sidewalk, and then they elect to sell the property. Once the new person comes in, do they have another three years? Do they need to comply to that, like, once they get the transfer of the property? Um, how would you respond in that situation?
Mr. Chair, it, and Commission, it's going to be based on the actual property, it's not based on the owner. So if you continue to sell the property, if it continues to change hands, that would be one of your exceptions or something that needs to be discussed at those closings, as knowing that is part of our development code. Um, we've reached out to our realty community, they understand that these are code revisions that are going through, and so that expectation would be able to provide that as part of people's closings to have those understandings of where we're trying to go as a city when you own and purchase property.
So basically, just to clarify, if the property sells within that three-year period, they have until that end of that three-year period to comply? Whether that is building the home and then putting the sidewalk, or just putting the sidewalk until they decide to build?
Commissioner Murray, that would be correct, yes.
I just have three left and I'm done for the night.
Okay, I've got a couple more. Um, these should be relatively quick, I think. Um, trying to find the specific spots. So this is, it was related to I think it was related to green infrastructure. Just double check. Yes, okay, so page three sixty-three. Um, this is the low-impact development, green infrastructure section, uh, under D one. It says green infrastructure slash low-impact development elements cannot be double counted with other city requirements, for example, landscape elements that are already required by code. I have a little issue with that particularly, or I guess specifically as it relates to like tree wells. Like you could, you could sink your tree well, right? That would serve as a, a bioswale, which would be low-impact development. But that tree well is being also required in your landscape requirements. So according to this statement, that tree well would not count towards my landscaping. Correct? Because I made it a bioswale?
The idea in that case, by including the, um, low-impact development or green infrastructure controls by doing the sunken tree well, that would be considered going beyond the minimum requirement. So in that case, I, I think it would count. The, the tree wouldn't count if you're required to do the tree, the tree well in general doesn't count. But if you do an enhancement to the tree well to implement green infrastructure controls, then that would count.
Gotcha, okay, thank you. And then would, so that, that statement would also hold true if you did like a larger retention where you landscaped it with, um, you know, native species, so rather than just dig a hole and it just sits there as dirt or rock, you landscape it. The that would also count towards your landscaping requirements? Be, the length, so the, the hole itself, the thing that's retaining the water, that's your green infrastructure. But then you're planting it to be more green infrastructure. You wouldn't then have to then go do additional landscaping on your site. Is that, am I making sense?
Mr. Chair, um, Commission, Mr. Chair and Commission, that would be correct. We are actually encouraging developers to, when they have a chance, to use the ponding essentially area and plant into those vegetations because they will obtain that natural water, that is going to be counting as part of their landscaping. We're not asking for additional, we want them to use those as areas.
Yeah, okay, great. And then if they chose not to landscape it, that's when that they wouldn't get, because it's just a dirt hole, right? So that wouldn't count towards their landscaping?
That is correct, because there is criteria as to how many trees or shrubs that you have to implement in order for it to count for landscaping.
Got it, okay, thank you. Okay, I think that oh, just a question on, um, pre- tree preservation. So this would apply to all trees citywide, or just a, like a subdivision, like a new subdivision? So in other words, as a homeowner, I have a gigantic mulberry tree, it's probably seventy years old and eventually needs to come down. I would, that would be covered under this section?
Correct, all, all existing trees and in any subdivision, whether it's new or an existing subdivision.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Yeah, any tree bigger than two inches in the entire city, you will have to get a tree removal permit.
That's what it says.
So that was one of my, one of my tags of, of the three left, and we don't currently have this in our code today. I would wish we'd just strike that one out.
I guess what's the reasoning behind having that in the first place? Is it to get more money from tree permits? Is it to preserve trees or natural shading? Is there a specific reason why we're adding that now versus why it's not in the current code?
Um, this came out of a recommendation of several of the city's different plans. There are several recommendations about increasing the tree canopy citywide, um, supporting uh, cool corridors. Do you have additional comments to add?
You're doing really good.
Thank you.
Steve Bingham, Parks and Recreation. This is about, um, meeting tree canopy and, um, that, for example, there's a study in Denver that identified two areas that should be similar in temperature. One had a deficit of trees, the other one met, you know, expected standards, and there was a nine-degree temperature difference. And so I think this is about, um, being green, this is about, um, you know, a lot of different things related to trees. I think one of the things we need to do is, um, look at the size requirement that is here and just review this before the next meeting. But it is not uncommon for communities to have some requirement of trees of a certain size. Have either a permit to remove or, you know, a number of remedies. And it's also not uncommon to exempt those for like con- developers in construction. So let's go back and look at that some.
Yeah, my experience has been, um, my first internship in college in the city planning department was basically uh, reviewing tree removal permits, so I'm very familiar with that process. Um, in that case, we had two tiers. So maybe some things are, to think about of below a certain, between two inches and something, it's, you know, less of a big deal versus it's the massive trees that are really giving us that, that shade that is a different either fee structure or whatever. So that's one way to approach it. But we wouldn't be the first city to implement something like this. They're pretty common across the country.
In here, there's a, uh, trees that are not exempt from preservation are considered protected trees. Where is that provision, where's that list of protected trees? Or is that just literally anything over two inches?
Uh, a protected tree is anything that's not listed in C. So the larger than two inches, a diseased tree, uh, one that's causing a safety hazard. If it's being grown as part of a tree farm, or if it's listed uh, by the State Department of Agriculture as a noxious species, so undesirable or invasive plant. So if you're not one of those, then you would be considered a protected tree.
So this, this allows like mesquite trees that aren't native to our land here? I mean, to, and, uh, what, what are the other one, um, on the river?
Cottonwood?
So you got cottonwoods, you got, uh, so if as long as it's not, as long as the New Mexico Department of Agriculture says it's a noxious species, I can, I can cut it down no matter what?
If they say it is a noxious species,
Okay.
then it can be cut down.
Okay. But this is gonna, now what's the ramifications of someone in the city that just, I'm cutting my own tree down?
I guess another, another point there is, I guess education needs to be provided to the city, otherwise we're gonna get into the, oh, my god, I didn't know that that was now a requirement, and then they get a fine or whatnot.
And the additional part that I would say, I mean, I mean, considering we saw this with, you know, in, in other places, yes, the number two there on C for exempted trees, the dead or diseased tree, which is deemed beyond point of recovery, deemed according to who, you know, if I've got some two-inch tree there, you know, I'm calling that thing dead, throwing some bleach on it, chopping it off and not getting my permit, you know what I mean, kind of thing? So how do we, you know, really kind of not let the workaround be a workaround if that's what we intend, I suppose? But, um, I guess at the same time, it also strikes me that, you know, you can let the weeds go for a little while and have some two-inch trees sprout up in your yard like that. And so those are just places where, of course, I know you already talked about the size threshold, but just concerns.
For the, for the protected trees that are removed, um, that would be a tree removal permit that can be approved by the director. And if you do keep a protected tree, it counts toward your landscaping requirements. If you don't want to keep the protected tree, you can still cut it down. But the idea is in item E that it would be replaced by a new tree somewhere else on your site if it was in someplace inconvenient for development. So it's not that you can't cut it down at all, you can, but the city would like you to replace it somewhere.
Is this tree preservation really necessary? Because in the landscaping, so to, to your point there, Steve, in the landscaping, I'm supposed to put trees and other st- stuff like that anyways, right? And so if I do a new subdivision, if I do a new, uh, if I get a new building permit, if I up, if I change things, I'm gonna have to modify the landscaping anyways. And then that, modifying that landscaping, I'm gonna have to make sure I'm up to date with the current landscaping code. So I'm gonna still receive the, the shade from the trees to get my nine-degree difference, whether I have this tree preservation or not.
For the, the credit that you would receive for preserving one of the protected trees toward your landscaping requirements for the site, in D two, we say that it's credited toward the landscaping requirements with each preserved tree counting as three trees. So the idea would be to incentivize an existing tree on the site, um, that's probably more mature than the new trees that would get replaced. So there is an incentive, it's not necessarily a one-to-one replacement by, um, a preserved tree compared to a new tree. So there is kind of a trade-off there.
I think that's the only one I agree with you on. Is the D, like, maybe we should, if it was me, I would just cross out all of this tree preservation and, and then put the only one is, is protected trees may be credited toward landscaping requirements, so that we would see, you know, people trying to leave a tree. But I mean, that's just, that's just natural in, in someone that's gonna, I already have a big tree here on my parking lot, I don't want to cut it down. I don't, I don't need an incentive, like, I don't need a tree preservation to tell me to I don't, I don't need an incentive, like, I don't need a tree preservation to tell me to not cut it down. In the real, like, realistically is, was what I'm, at least that's my thoughts. Maybe I shouldn't say realistically, I should say my viewpoint is I would leave a big tree. And if you're gonna give me credit for my landscaping so I can leave the one tree and I don't have to put three more, I mean, that's, you know, I'm gonna do that. I don't need a tree preservation, I, I would still cross this whole thing out personally.
Well, I think if everybody came to the same conclusion that you did, we wouldn't need a tree preservation ordinance. But, um, I have no further comments on any other parts of, uh, the code. So, um, does anybody else have anything else?
I just have my last two. Um, and then I'm done. And, and page three-ten, which is cul-de-sacs and dead-end streets, A. So it's at the very top. Um, my question is, is can you help me understand when I could use a cul-de-sac and when I can't?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner, cul-de-sacs have always been, um, the least connecting point in any subdivision. It doesn't connect you to anywhere, it doesn't provide options for pedestrians, it doesn't give you the connectivity any between subdivisions. And so the city has always discouraged cul-de-sacs. I understand they are a great selling point, um, as those become the prime lots that people most want to live on. Um, we understand that portion, but it doesn't give us the connectivity that we're looking for. And so rarely will we use, um, cul-de-sacs or have developers use cul-de-sacs except for like, we've seen them at the boundaries of possibly the city limits because we know we're not gonna be able to connect if it's gonna have to go through the county and their developments may not be the same. Um, we tend to see them in subdivisions used very, like, sporadically, but you're not gonna see them as the common nature. And so there's no real design element saying it's gonna be okay to do in all of them. They are discouraged as they do not provide the connectivity that Elevate Las Cruces said we wanted to start using. We're trying to encourage that subdivisions interconnect so that way we don't just have walls and boundaries set between subdivisions and people have more ways to get around in a subdivision.
So as a, as a kid growing up, I lived in a cul-de-sac. And the cul-de-sac was the place that all of us went and played street hockey and we put the basketball hoop out there and we played baseball and we did all of those wonderful items that provided, the street was still a safe place to play because it was a cul-de-sac. And it provided other things. And you can, you see in all the Hallmark movies and all the other ones of cul-de-sacs in the gathering areas and, you know, and so. I, I like cul-de-sacs, always have liked a cul-de-sac. I lived on, now when I, I, uh, our first house that me and my wife had was not in a cul-de-sac. And once we started having children, we quickly moved from there because our kids would run out in the street and we would be running after them as fast as we can. So when you got a little three-year-old that is out there, I, we moved. So I just like cul-de-sacs, I like the safety of a cul-de-sac, I like the design factors of a cul-de-sac. And as a builder and a developer, they sell the, they, they're always the ones that sell first. So that's just, I would love to be able to put cul-de-sacs in there with, with less restrictions than you have on there right now. Anyways, that's my, I'll leave that with you. My very last one.
But before we move off that, just real quick, on the pedestrian cut-through component of cul-de-sacs, can we, I don't know, jazz up the ten-foot pavement requirement to have a little bit of landscaping? I know when the developers come in, they do those cut-throughs, it's literally just a canyon of concrete and block wall. Uh, we're just talking about Urban Heat Island and that's definitely the definition. And I know right now, I think it just says that it has to be a paved ten-foot path, but I think if we can add some requirements for some, some type of landscaping would be beneficial. So, back to you.
Very last one, landscaping. Um, five-dash-seven, page three-seventy-three. Um, C-three-two. This one's just random to me. Turf, other than native grasses identified on the approved plant list, is not permitted. What is that, what is, can you clarify what I can and can't use? So is this, is this saying that I cannot use turf, like just regular grass for landscaping?
In the, uh, the city has an approved plant list now that includes different trees and shrubs and ground cover and, uh, different types of grasses. Um, this is specifying that the only, it's, it's a little bit redundant because we're saying all plants have to comply with the, with the plant list. Um, but just specifying that ground-covering turf, grass, needs to be a type that's included in the city's approved plant list.
Do you know if Bermuda is included in that?
I would hope so, yes. It, it's gonna be your primary turf in this community.
Okay.
I don't know offhand, um, it is in the tech manual. But, um, it's, the city has the existing list and the existing list has been moved there in case there are updates that are needed over time. So it's, uh, whatever the, the current list is, is, is still a requirement. We didn't make any changes to the types of grass.
Okay, cuz I, I just read this as other than native grasses. And so native grasses, Bermuda's not really a native grass. Um, it's, I'm, I'm thinking more like the, when you go out in the desert here, you see like a little clump. I don't know what type of grass that is, but it's a little clump that grows up and then you got another little clump somewhere else that grows up. Don't know what grass that is, but that to me is native grass. That's, this to me is more like, tur, when it's like turf, it's like, okay, that's a, that's a playfield. That's a area that I'm gonna mow, I'm gonna do stuff like that. And it doesn't seem like that's allowed for me to put a...
I think it's trying to move away from like the little strip between the back of the curb and the sidewalk, that you can't plant that with a lawn. It's, it's not really serving a purpose, you're just watering the heck out of it. So I think that's the intent. You can't take a patch in your corner of your parking lot and, and make it turf. Unless you're building a ball field or something like that, then you, you would have to use native, I think is what it's attempting to do.
Okay.
All right, any final questions, thoughts?
With, Steve Bingham, Parks and Recreation Director. We'll look at that list and we'll get that over to you. Um, I do wanna go back to one comment. I like and appreciate the, um, thoughts around landscaping on those paths between, um, you know, the homes and the cul-de-sacs. I think typically they do not require landscaping on them because who takes care of them? What typically ends up happening is, is none of the neighbors or, you know, one of them takes care of the ones next to them. But those type of spaces tend to be, um, neglected and abandoned. And so I'm all for the beautification. You also have the other side of, um, you now either put a burden on, you know, your city departments to go maintain land that is not really theirs and it's not easily put into the schedule because it's such a small space. So I would advise against that just because, you know, if there's a wall there, um, it becomes neglected.
I certainly would disagree, um, and I know, I know it's late and we're trying to get out of here, but I think my counterpoint to that statement would be, well then, is that really what we need to facilitate pedestrian connectivity? Because if it, if it does get neglected, fills with trash, fills with debris, fills with, it's not, people, people avoid places like that for reasons, right? I mean, watch a scary movie, there's a reason why you don't run into the corner. Um, and I just think when you build this kind of cavern, this alley where, you know, I'm a white male, I, I don't really have concerns for my safety, but I know that there are other people in our community that wouldn't walk down that sketchy-looking thing particularly maybe at night. So I, I just, if, I hear what you're saying, but then maybe that's not the, that's not the solution to our connectivity issues. Maybe we need to rethink that requirement so that we're getting something that is actually facilitating what we want, what we wanna see. And, and, you know, I think if, if that, if we do that, then I think we would be more successful in that policy outcome. All right, um, I just wanna say I appreciate staff sticking around and tolerating us this evening. Um, this obviously was our first time as this body getting an opportunity to weigh in, so, um, we definitely think took advantage of that. Um, so we really appreciate your all's work, um, getting to this point. Um, I think there's a lot of good discussion. I'm really excited to see this come back in November and hopefully we can get something that maybe isn't perfect but, um, is, I think, better than what we currently have and we'll just continue to evolve forward. So, um, with that, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Hi, second.
All in favor?
Aye.